Presentations at this portion of the meeting, public discussion. This is a time for individuals to discuss any item with the council that is not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council for general public discussion? If anyone wishes to speak to the council under general public discussion, please step forward to the podium and start with your name and address.
I signed up on the list, was that?
That's later.
That's later.
That's during the agenda item that you signed up for.
Okay, so I, okay, so I'm.
We will call you later, I'm sorry, we will call you when we get to that point.
Oh, I thought it was for this part. So can I just do my spiel now?
Is this about?
Isn't it that you want to talk about?
It's in general, it's a little bit zoning, it's a little bit data center, and it's a little bit NDA, it's a little bit feedback.
Then you should do that under the ordinance.
Under the ordinance, thank you.
Does anyone else have any items of general public discussion, items not on the agenda tonight? If so, please step forward to the podium and start with your name and address. Is there any general public discussion this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Minutes approval or correction of October 6, 2025, city council continuation minutes, and accounts payable approved general city warrants from October 1, 2025 through October 15, 2025, in the amount of $2,212,130.21. Do we have a motion relating to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Jelly to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson, roll call please.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next, we will move on to ordinance 2025-18. An ordinance amending Herman Town Code of Ordinances, Section 270 Fee Schedule. This is a first reading, we will not be taking a vote on it this evening, but there will be an opportunity for public discussion. Mr. Mulder, could you summarize this for us?
So this is an annual resolution that we have.
It's not coming through.
This is an annual resolution that we have each year where we take a look at the various fees that we charge residents for various things. In some cases, we're actually decreasing them, in other cases, we're adding late renewal fees. And so there's a number of them on the agenda. We're not taking any action tonight. We will have a public hearing on the fee schedule in two weeks before we adopt it.
Thank you. Is there any public input on the change to the fee schedule through ordinance? Do we have any public input on the first reading of ordinance 2025-18? Last opportunity for public input on the ordinance amending Herman Town Code of Ordinances, Section 270 Fee Schedule. Hearing and we will move on to resolutions. Resolution 2025-155. Resolution authorizing the City of Herman Town to provide municipal consent to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for State Project 6908-68 on trunk highway two improvements. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, could you explain this for us?
Sure, whenever Mendat or St. Louis County is taking action or doing improvements to their roadwork in the city of Herman Town, they ask for municipal consent. In this particular case, there is a parcel on Highway 2 just west of Midway where there's currently two driveways, they're going to change that to one and put in a turn lane. So they're asking us to, actually, we're not providing consent, we're waiving that municipal consent, so.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilors? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-155? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing the City of Herman Town to provide municipal consent to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for State Project 6908-68 on trunk highway two improvements? Roll call please.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2025-156. Resolution approving memorandum of understanding, MOU, and authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute, deliver MOU with Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 47, LALS. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Jelly. Mr. Mulder, could you go over this for us?
Sure, following our last meeting when we had a following our last meeting when we had a closed session to talk about some of the difficulties we had relative to the recruitment of police officers, we sent a proposed memorandum of understanding to the police union. They did sign off on that today, and so this will provide some additional compensation as a recruitment bonus for new officers between now, between June 1 of this year and December 31 of next year. And it'll also provide some additional benefits that will be provided to them, vacation and sick on the front end. Usually you have to be here so many years to get some of those benefits. This will allow sick and vacation on the front end.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? And this will allow us to recruit for an open position that we've been unable to fill?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Two, two open positions?
Two, no, one.
One.
We filled one of the two. Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Herman Town and Law Enforcement Labor Services Local Number 47? Any public input on Resolution 2025-156? Roll call please.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2025-157. Resolution authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute a 10-year multi-jurisdictional agreement between the City of Herman Town and the City of Duluth to create a regional tactical response team. Is there a motion relating to this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Jelly to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, should we have our chief?
Yes, please.
Address this, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
It's not coming through.
It is on, I guess I got to get way closer. Yes, so we've been considering this, this cooperation and agreement for some time. The main idea here is it'll strengthen inter-agency cooperation and capabilities through our regional approach to tactical response. It'll increase and enhance officers' opportunities for growth, both tactically and for professional development. And it's going to provide a cost-effective way for us to provide those services.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Chief, does that mean our officers assigned to this would be responding to these type of incidences in Duluth?
That is correct. When, when a page goes out for tactical response from the team, our two officers, if we have them assigned, would be responding to the city of Duluth along with Duluth officers and then they would, they would be providing the same response back.
So we would have their response in our city if it was needed?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
Tenure agreement, I'm assuming that previous one's expiring? We did not have an agreement, Councilor LeBlanc, in the past. We depended on the county's emergency response team in the past. Have we been in a situation in the past where it would have been helpful to have Duluth's response? Yes.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-157? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing a multi-jurisdictional agreement between the City of Herman Town and the City of Duluth to create a regional tactical response team? Roll call please.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2025-158. Resolution approving D E E D contamination cleanup and investigation grant application. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Peterson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Ron Chetty address this?
Yes, please.
Mayor Boucher, councilors, this is an application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for contamination cleanup. The state makes funds readily available to applicants through a competitive program. Those applications are due in rounds, one of them being November. This November coming, Opedin Development, who undertook the Pillars Development and then the associated Fox Ridge cottages of Herman Town. The cottages of Herman Town project discovered some contamination related to the soil underneath that project. Those soils have been remediated, so they have been disposed of properly. But Opedin has asked the city as the required applicant through this program to make an application on their behalf. And we are proposing to the council that we approve that application, which though the, the cleanup has already been done, the funds that would be returned to Opedin would allow for some lifestyle and amenity upgrades that we feel would be beneficial to the community and make the, make the development and the experience of the residents more beneficial.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-158? Is there any public input on the resolution approving deed contamination cleanup and investigation grant application? Roll call please.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2025-159. Resolution approving consent related to the development contract between Herman Town Economic Development Authority, the City of Herman Town, and KTJ 360 LLC for the Pillars of Herman Town Senior Living Project. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Jelly to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, Mulder, who would we like to handle this from staff?
Mr. Ron Chetty was the lead on this one, so we're going to let him explain this one.
Mayor Boucher, council, this is again about the Opedin Development Group who developed the pillars. They developed that under the company of KTJ 360. KTJ 360 is who the development contract is with. It is a three-party agreement between the City of Herman Town, the Herman Town Economic Development Authority, and KTJ, also known as Opedin. Our development agreement with them requires that if, if they are going to do any refinancing or any, having any change in the contract with who owns the contract or who is the, the actual developer that holds the contract, we have to give consent to that. That's what this consent is for. To do the Fox Ridge cottages of Herman Town project, they refinanced the pillars to take advantage of the equity that they've built in that project and help bring on more housing on the site. And so this consent allows them to do that, that refinancing, and also transfer the development agreement to the operating company rather than the development LLC.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-159? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a consent related to the development contract between Herman Town Economic Development Authority, City of Herman Town, and KTJ 360 LLC? Roll call please.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2025-160. Resolution approving consent to assignment of development agreement among KTJ 360 LLC, Pillars of Herman Town LLC, and City of Herman Town, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and get to the next page, deliver the agreement on behalf of the City of Herman Town. Do we have a motion relating to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Peterson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jelly. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Johnson to explain this?
Yes, this is a similar, similar project, but a slight, a little bit different on it, and Eric was the lead on this part.
Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Mr. Ron Chetty said, this is essentially the same type of agreement that we're looking for for the reassignment. So back in September, the city entered into an agreement with KTJ 360 for the development agreement associated with the cottages of Herman Town. Now, as Opedin, who is essentially the same group as KTJ as well as Pillars of Herman Town, the lender is requiring that the agreement be in that same group, i.e. the Pillars of Herman Town LLC, to be able to finalize their financing package associated with this. So what this ends up doing is aligning the ownership structure associated both with the pillars senior building as well as the cottages of Herman Town.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from councilors?
Is, is this the same agreement where we take ownership of the pipe that's in the ground after construction?
Yes, that is correct, that is the development agreement.
I still think we should revisit that. I don't think the city should own a pipe that a private entity is profiting off of. I think we can revisit that in future agreements, we've already approved this one.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-160? Could you step forward to the podium and start with your name and address, please?
Excuse me, Karen Harmon, Herman Town. Do you want the whole address and everything too now?
Please.
5279 West Arrowhead, Herman Town. Okay. When that parcel of land was originally going to be developed, they were going to have cottages and houses in that development. Are you talking about similar houses now or cottages?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, to describe the cottages that are in a different location and of a different type, but go ahead.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. So earlier back in 2020, when the application came forward, there was the 105 unit apartment building that was actually hard up on the corner of Uggstad and, excuse me, not Uggstad, Leveque as well as Maple Grove. There were 20 single-family small lots associated with that as well as four quad homes, basically put to be 16 units. So what was approved earlier this year for the cottages of Herman Town, this is for 10 twin home buildings that are essentially out on that location where the previous building was going to be proposed. So it is much less dense than what had been proposed back at that time.
And I've been told that these are transitional housing for people to transition into the pillars as they age or need more services. The original ones, I believe, were not connected to the pillars in a management sense, and these people would be allowed to use all the amenities of the pillars.
I know that the community was quite upset with the large development during the first proposed development. And, and so they were happy with it. The development was downsized. So I hadn't seen anything about the new plan. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that their concerns were, again, considered with this second development. And what I've seen with the changes in the Saints Glastica where you have people that could come into the program and as their needs change, be able to stay in the community and have their needs changed. From what you've said, it sounds like that kind of reach. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Will it comment on the resolution in front of us? Last opportunity for public comment on Resolution 2025-160. Roll call please.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
And now we move to ordinance 2025-17. An ordinance amending Title II of the Herman Town City Code by amending the official zoning map. Do we have a motion relating to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Peterson, is there a second to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so tonight, tonight is the second reading of the ordinance to rezon 220 acres in Section 31 of the City of Herman Town. We are following the process that is outlined in our ordinance and statutes, and we use this process regardless of size, scale, and the end user. The recommendation before the city council tonight is initial of land use for those parcels of land, and this is just an early step in that process. We're going to have several staff provide background on the proposed rezoning. We'll start with Eric Johnson, our community development director, to give background on the rezoning and the comprehensive plan. Chad Ron Chetty will then speak to the proposed economic development part of the project. And then we've asked representatives from Mortenson, the builder, and Kimberly Horn, the engineer on the project, and then also representative of Minnesota Power to speak to some of the issues relative to power. So Eric, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mulder, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I'm going to break this into a couple of different aspects. The first will be speaking to the zoning map amendment and generally how it relates to the comprehensive plan. And then lastly, the whole comprehensive plan process as well. So earlier in the, basically over the past two years, the city was in the process of updating its comprehensive plan. And then we did adopt an update to the comprehensive plan in April of 2025. So as part of that work, the comprehensive plan identified the southwest quadrant of the city in the Adolf area to be guided towards business and light manufacturing. So as I mentioned, this area is in that southwest quadrant where Debutz County Road 13, Minnesota Highway 2, has access to rail as well as the Minnesota Power substation. And as I mentioned before, that the comprehensive plan guided that towards business and light manufacturing. The purpose of this is to be able to create employment centers, broader diversity of jobs, as well as increased tax revenues associated with industrial type of use that way. So before us this evening is a second reading. Harmony Group LLC is requesting a rezoning of 17 parcels totaling 220 acres from S1 suburban to BLM business and light manufacturing. They do have the concurrence of the existing property owners associated with these parcels. As I had mentioned, the availability of BLM that we identified in the comprehensive plan is fairly limited in the city of Herman Town. It's really just limited to some info lots that we have is on some small acreage parcels, generally either in the city's industrial park that we have, a couple of little parcels that are up in the airport quadrant, up on Air Base and Sunby Road, and then a few parcels here and there along Highway 2. So by looking at a larger acreage rezoning, it provides more opportunities for business growth as well as expansion that way. So the comprehensive plan guides these parcels for that business and light manufacturing as once again, they're large enough to accommodate either larger building footprints in employers. City staff gets calls from time to time, people looking for industrial sites that could house a 30,000 or 50,000 square foot building. And honestly, we don't even have anything that size. So by rezoning more land to the light industrial type of use, it gives either the city more options to look at this land or potential developers of land as well, some other opportunities that just don't currently exist here in the city that way. So once again, this rezoning, it focuses the development opportunities for new business and light manufacturing in the designated areas with strategic highway access as well as environments to be able to attract and create new businesses, potential new job growth associated with that while limiting the impact on denser residential areas. So next, I'd like to speak to the comprehensive plan process. There's been some questions about how this all transpired through the past few years. So the city started the comprehensive plan process in the fall of 2023. The first months were generally spent on collecting base data associated with the city. These are wetlands, zoning, topography, land use, demographics associated with that. So a steering committee was formed and met in early spring and summer of 2024 to provide their input on some planning concepts such as development, environmental, parks and recreation, and housing opportunities here in the city. So through late summer and winter of 2024, the consultant city staff worked on basically individual chapters associated with the comprehensive plan. There are seven chapters associated with the comprehensive plan. They range everywhere from existing land uses, environmental, parks and recreation, housing, zoning, et cetera, that way. So also during this time, the city had begun receiving significant interest in what's called the Hawkland Business Park. That's the existing brownfield site that's over at Highway 53 as well as Leveque bypass. As that has moved forward, there's an entity that is extremely interested in that particular parcel that way. So during the same time period, the city starts looking at the comprehensive plan update, and we realize that we essentially have a shortage of light industrial type of land that's guided in the comprehensive plan for more light industrial use. As I said before, we're limited to some small parcels, small acreages associated with that. So as we look further, where is an opportunity for light industrial type of growth within the city? We looked at that quadrant of Adolf, the 35, the southwest quadrant of the city. Once again, it's proximity to the county and state highways. Power rail is a good opportunity for future industrial development that way. So in order to attract industrial type of uses, you need to have urban services associated with that as well. So as part of the comprehensive plan, it also extends the urban service area associated in this portion of the city that way. That gives the ability to attract some potential users into this quadrant. Otherwise, it's sort of been a well and septic type of property, and it has limited uses as far as growth, as far as an industrial standpoint. So as we continue to move forward, February through April, because we wanted to extend the urban services area, the city met and discussed with the WLSSD on the, how would we extend that urban services area? And the WLSD also commented on the city's comprehensive plan as well. So in early March, there was also a public open house to obtain any comments from the residents at large that was posted in numerous places around the city, whether it be the website and the paper that way. At the time, there's also a couple of interviews that were done on different news media stations that way. March and April, the draft comprehensive plan was shared with the various boards and commissions associated with the city, and we provided and looking for the review and comment. In late March 25, the draft comprehensive plan was posted to the city's website for people's review and comment associated with that. Likewise, basically during this timeframe, essentially from March to June, there was large format boards placed here in City Hall that people could come in and look at that from a public standpoint, be able to provide comments also if they did not have access. be able to provide comments also if they did not have access to our website. Also during this time period, the city was looking at different zoning opportunities, once again, associated with the B L M, and how those could be incorporated, whether through definitions or different uses that could be utilized in an industrial area that way. And then lastly, in April of twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to accept the comprehensive plan, and the city council approved that comprehensive plan in late April. That basically gives you an outline of the comprehensive plan process, the multiple points that we could get citizen or resident input, comments associated with that, and just the length of the time period associated with it.
Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Mulder?
Chad Ronchetti, economic development director, to talk about the economic development impact of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder, Mayor Boucher, council. As Mr. Mulder said, this is the proposal before you tonight, or the application before you tonight is about a rezone, but it's difficult to uncouple a rezone from a project. And so as it pertains to a proposed data center project near Midway Road and Highway two, we thought we should cover some of the project ground. The project is a proposed three hundred thousand square foot building. The best comparison we have in the city of Herman Town for three hundred thousand square feet is the Menards. It falls a little short at two hundred thousand square feet, but it gives some relative size comparison for what three hundred thousand square feet can look like. The project will also have associated elements such as office and warehouse and some other associated infrastructure. This project is a master planned project, however, that could include up to four data center buildings. That master planned project would take eight to ten years to fully build out. Each of those four data center buildings would have an approximate square footage of three hundred thousand square feet as well. As Mr. Mulder pointed out, I'm going to talk a little bit about the community and economic development portions of this project, given my job title. But then I'm going to ask the development team to step up and talk about some of the project specifics, in particular, those that have been common threads in terms of public questions we've received. And then we'll have Minnesota Power step up and discuss some of the energy use considerations, also speaking to some of the public comments we've received as well. So community and economic benefits for this project. I think all of you are aware that economic development is often measured in a few common metrics, right? And those common metrics are the jobs that are created, both construction and permanent positions, and then the wages associated with those jobs. Tax revenue generation, private capital investment and economic multipliers as a result, and also the public infrastructure and the associated, and the associated use of them. So while I will talk about those common metrics, I'd like to frame them a little differently this evening for you and frame them more as stories for the council as you consider the project going forward. In terms of jobs, there will be construction jobs that will be created as a part of this project. The numbers are at least in the high hundreds, could surpass that in terms of construction jobs. And how does that translate to community benefits? This project would very heavily utilize union and craft labor. Often, these skilled trades go from project to project. They bounce from project to project on schedules from twelve to eighteen months, being the length of the, of projects they work on. This project would give these high-paying jobs an eight to ten-year runway of steady work in one place. So what does that mean? Well, that means that a senior in high school who starts her electrician certification at graduation today, that means she walks onto this job site at her, as her first position as an apprentice and would walk off this job site as a journeyman eight years later. That's significant. Permanent jobs, at least forty full-time jobs with wages well above the county average would, would be created on this site in Herman Town. And what that means for this community? It means these are technical jobs in the technology sector. This diversifies our job sector beyond our foundational industries like mining, timber, and tourism. And that means that my kid, your neighbor's kid, or the kid from Iowa who fell in love with this place when they came here for college to seek their technology degree will have a much better chance of being able to stay here and work here because we created the chance through this project. Tax revenues. We have done some preliminary calculations, but we don't have the numbers well defined yet. We continue to work through that as a part of our development agreement process. And when the development agreement comes forward, we'll have a better sense for what those tax numbers will be. That said, we do know that tax, commercial, or commercial tax base pays three, or two to three times what residents pay. And because they utilize services far less than the residents, parks, schools, fire, police, because they utilize those services less, that makes them the workhorses of tax base. What that means for our community? When our fire department needs a new ladder truck, when the burden of, that means that the burden on your personal taxes will be lessened by this project. Should our growing school district need a new school? That means the increase in the tax revenue for our school district will help, will help greatly in funding that project. And so while we are all feeling the burden of increased taxes, commercial development will certainly help to alleviate that. Private investment and economic spinoff. A minimum of six hundred and fifty million dollars in private investment in an industry that is shown to generate six jobs for every one job on its location. And what that means for our community? That means significant benefit to the businesses, including the small businesses that exist in our community today. This will help them make and possibly expand their payrolls. That means that they can possibly get into markets and provide services that they've dreamed about, that they've dreamed about providing. And it will help strengthen the businesses that they have built here in our hometown. Public infrastructure. This project would fund, through the project, fifty to a hundred million dollars worth of water and sewer infrastructure that then become a public asset. That means it gets built by the project and does not have an impact on the general fund. What that means for our community? That, we all know that there is a housing crisis in our community and in our region. People who want to downsize into a new, smaller home don't have that option today. That translates to people who want to move into their first house or into a house that can accommodate their growing families. They can't do that because the houses aren't opening up. So when your neighbor's kid wants to move home from college to start their job at a local airplane manufacturer and begin building that family, they struggle to find a place to live, and often, they can't do that. This public infrastructure would make it possible to create more housing to address that crisis. So I've told a few stories to try to make it a little bit more grounded in what this project actually means outside of just metrics and numbers. From here, I think I'll kick it to the Mortenson team to talk about the project specifics.
Hey, Wayne, just a question. If we have questions as we go, would you like us to wait until our comment period after the public discussion? Or should we be, if we have questions for Chad, should we ask him before? So people maybe have some of their issues assuaded before they come up to speak?
Before the public speaking?
Yeah.
At the end of this, these presentations, we'll have a chance to ask questions before public discussion. Go ahead.
Dan Lesser with Mortenson Development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, chief, city staff. One of the common threads we heard was more information. So tonight, we're hopefully going to provide some of that. We also understand that this is a second reading for the rezoning, but as Director Ronchetti said, these are tough to kind of peel apart without kind of talking about everything. So maybe first, what are data centers? And then what does this one look like? And our project team is here to help with that. So what are data centers? They, they're critical pieces of our local and national infrastructure. That is a fact. They, every time we pull out our phone, use our computers, shop online, talk to your kids on Zoom, whatever it is, all those things ping through a data center. And the more that we consume data, the higher the demand is for these structures across our country. So that's what data centers are. It's a very simple, simple way to describe them. But I'll turn it over to the team here, and we can talk specifically about, about this project.
Thanks, Dan. Brian Wordeman with Kimberly Horn, one of the engineers working on the project from our team here. Then we got Jason Scrimshaw from Kimberly Horn as well. So I wanted to provide a little bit more technical background on the project as we are working towards the applications for a special use permit in the C I D P for a communication services facility, of which a lot of this information, we also plan to present at Planning and Zoning tomorrow night. So let's start first by taking a look at the site. Both Chad and Eric had mentioned where the site is, but here's a map that depicts the location of the proposed development at the southwest corner of Midway Road and Morris Thomas Road, immediately east of the existing Minnesota Power Arrowhead Substation, which has a significant, significant impact and draw for this type of development. Additionally, with the strong county infrastructure and roadways adjacent to the site, as well as U S Highway two, provides great access for an industrial type project. If we go to the next slide, we wanted to give some background on the site studies that we have commissioned or have engaged other project partners to complete over the last couple of months. The first of which is a wetland delineation. So we have completed a field wetland delineation of the entirety of the project area in which we've worked with the city, the county Bowser, as well as the Minnesota D N R to establish boundaries across the site for existing wetland areas. We've completed a Threat and Endangered Species Review concurrent with our Alternative Urban Area Wide Review, which was before council, the last meeting. We've completed a cultural and archaeological survey in concurrence with the Fond du Lac Tribe. We've completed a tree survey, mostly around the perimeter of the property in identifying areas in which we can preserve existing vegetation to continue to create a natural buffer or screen. We've done a phase one environmental site assessment, and we've also completed a noise assessment or noise modeling specific to this project in which we'll get into some more details further on in our presentation. If we go to the next slide, this is the currently proposed site plan for the development. This site plan is largely similar to that of which was included in the A U A R document. As Chad had mentioned, we're proposing four data center buildings, of which you can see one in the southwest corner, southeast corner, northwest corner, and northeast corner of the site. Those data center buildings are approximately three hundred thousand square feet in square foot floor area and would be approximately forty to fifty feet in height. Additionally, as far as structures on the campus, we're proposing two approximately thirty thousand square foot office buildings, one of which, or the two are generally located, one central to the site and then one kind of more southeastern portion of the site. Those buildings would be approximately twenty to thirty feet in height. And then there is one office warehouse storage building, which is approximately forty-five thousand square feet in floor area, which would be more located central to the entrance area. The site access would come off of Morris Thomas Road in the northwest corner of the property, adjacent to where Minnesota Power's existing gravel access driveway is located. That access point would be the primary entry into the site in which there'd be gated secure entry point. There would be secure access or a secure perimeter around the entirety of the project. There would be one additional secondary access point, which is located more central to the campus off of Morris Thomas Road, which would provide a secondary means for potentially construction as well as emergency access long term. A few of the elements on the site that helped, the many studies that we completed that helped inform this site plan, a number of which are the wetlands. So there is, as we delineated, there's a series of wetlands throughout the property, which we'll get into a little bit more detail in a bit. But we are preserving what would be a substantial existing wetland complex in the southeast corner of the site, which is proximal to the existing trout stream. So the area on the site plan that's generally shown in white in the southeast corner is an existing wetland that would not be disturbed as part of the project. Throughout the middle of the site and the central portions, the buildings have been located strategically to preserve existing wetlands throughout the site that are existing in there today. And you'd see a number of proposed stormwater basins, which have been strategically located as well across the property, which we'll get into a little bit more detail later on. Around the perimeter of the property, we, we've significantly increased the amount of setback or distance from the right of way to the proposed buildings above and beyond what is the baseline zoning requirements for the B L M zoning district. That setback is to provide an enhanced screen for landscaping, allow us to get in the perimeter fencing, develop some berms, and also install some screen walls and acoustical walls to help assist with some of the buffering from the project. If we go to the next slide, water usage for the project. Here's a graph that generally shows the anticipated water demand throughout the course of a normal day or operations. This, the data center buildings that are on the campus will not require water for cooling. This campus would be consistent with any other office or commercial development with its water usage, and that it would be used for restrooms, kitchen, cafeteria areas, laundry, showers, as well as landscape irrigation. The average daily use for the project, we're anticipating it to be anywhere between thirty thousand gallons a day and fifty thousand gallons a day, of which we studied up to fifty thousand gallons a day in the A U A R. That's an equivalent to approximately a hundred and sixty single-family residential units. And those are numbers that would be at full campus buildout. So post-construction of all four data center buildings. Wanted to note that that anticipated water usage may be anywhere between two to five percent of the existing city's water system. If we go to the next slide, related to traffic for the project. So there's a number of stakeholders that are involved, obviously, with the proximity to good roadway infrastructure, both from the city of Herman Town, St. Louis County, and Mendat District one. Traffic from this site, based on historical-like developments, we're anticipating that there would be approximately one thousand nine hundred and twenty daily trips coming to or from the facility, with the A M peak numbers being at two hundred and ninety at full campus buildout upon completion of all four buildings. To give some context to these traffic numbers, that would be the equivalence of a medium-sized department store. In our experience in working on these projects, the traffic demand for a data center, when compared to other called industrial manufacturing facilities on a similar, similar acreage, it could generate anywhere between twenty-five to fifty percent of that traffic. So it is a lower demand post-operations compared to a typical industrial-type project. During construction, as Chad had noted earlier, there's a significant presence during construction to complete the, the build of the facility. Based on historical numbers, we're anticipating that that would be more than what is operationally for the A M and P M peaks, with those numbers being approximately three hundred to sixty to three hundred and ninety trips during the peak hours. So ultimately, we have evaluated and modeled the traffic that's been completed. There's a number of intersections that we've identified improvements that are warranted to, one of which is at the site access point off of Morris Thomas Road, the need to construct turn lanes to access the development site. At Midway Road and Morris Thomas Road, we've identified the need for a traffic signal as well as enhanced turn lanes to provide improved traffic to and from the development site. And additionally, one more improvement warranted at U S Highway two and St. Louis River Road, which would be a westbound turn lane off of U S Highway two. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Jason here to speak more about acoustics.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. As, as Brian mentioned, my name is Jason. As Brian mentioned, my name is Jason Cremshaw, fellow civil engineer at Kimley Horn. Happy to talk to you tonight about some more details on the project. And especially elements of the project that helped inform and shape the design as it's evolved. So want to start with acoustics. We know that that is a topic of great interest to a lot of people. Maybe I'll start with just some housekeeping items about acoustics in general. Noise limits in Minnesota are set and established by Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the MPCA at a state level, and they're enforced locally at a city level. Those noise limits are dependent on adjacent land uses and are most restrictive near residential land uses. So our site will comply with the most restrictive residential noise ordinances. For our specific site, those ordinances are 60 decibels during daytime operations and 50 decibels during nighttime operations. That is the limit. We have conservatively designed our site and, and modeled our noise assessment to comply with 50 decibels in either daytime or nighttime operations. On this slide, you can see have a helpful graphic that shows, you know, a representative scale of comparative noise sources. The noise restrictions are measured in decibels, which important to note is not a linear scale, it's a logarithmic scale. So that means that every 10 decibels roughly is a doubling in the perceived level of noise or sound by the human ear. It also means that noises aren't compounded, so you can't take 240 decibel noise, 40 decibel level noises and combine them and suddenly they make an 80 decibel noise. If you, if you look at the graphic, that, that makes quick sense when you compare, you know, two refrigerators plugged in in the same room don't suddenly become the same noise as a motorcycle. So our site, because of that logarithmic scale, it becomes very important to model this in a very, very detailed, precise way to make sure that we're complying with the state ordinances. So we established a very detailed model that takes into account ground contact, topography, building location, building situation, as well as, you know, proposed mitigation measures. So our first pass of that model indicated that mitigation measures were warranted. So as you can see in the graphic on the left, we do have those noise contours being pulled in. That's representative of two different barrier walls as well as a large earthen berm. So along the eastern perimeter of the site, we're proposing an earthen berm with a noise wall on top of that. And on the north perimeter of the site, we're proposing a noise wall. These, like, like Brian mentioned in a previous slide, have the dual benefit of providing a visual buffer and screen as well as this noise abatement. If we flip to the next slide, want to talk a little bit about lighting. So our lighting on the site will be designed and governed similar to every other development in the city of Hermantown. We won't be seeking any kind of variance or, or, you know, special lighting considerations. As shown in the site plan slide, the setbacks that we're proposing are 10x of what's required. That helps us in, in meeting our light requirements. The city's requirement is that we, we don't, we don't provide any glare from our property onto neighboring adjacent parcels, and we also don't allow for light spill over from our site into other parcels. So one of the main ways we're achieving that is by our large setbacks, pulling the majority of our site infrastructure internal to the site. We've also been very deliberate and intentional about the selection and placement of our light fixtures. So placing them in, in sensible locations and using down lighting and inward lighting using cutoff shields that allow the fixture unit to, to cut off that, that light spill. So we will be complying with all city lighting standards. The next slide, so the graphic here is the existing wetlands on site. As mentioned previously, we've completed both desktop and field delineation of the existing wetlands. We've met both virtually and in person onsite with a technical evaluation panel or a TEP. The TEP is comprised of city and county staff, Bowser, which is the State Board of Water and Soil Resources, as well as the Minnesota DNR. We fully anticipate that the project will be, that the wetlands on site will be regulated by the Wetland Conservation Act and potentially the Army Corps of Engineers. So we'll be in the process of applying for an approved jurisdictional determination, which will determine our permitting course for wetlands. In getting to this point, we have gone through multiple evolutions of the site plan, overlaying wetlands, lighting, noise, landscaping, traffic to really try to optimize for each one of these design elements. If we flip to the next slide, want to touch on stormwater. So this is a cross section of our typical stormwater basin. As mentioned previously, they're designed to be filtration basins or biofiltration basins. On the left side of the graphic, upstream of the basin is a pretreatment structure. So these structures are intended to provide a filtering of the initial flush, floatables, trash, large debris, to keep them from clogging up and impacting the efficiency of that filtration media. Downstream of that pretreatment structure would be our primary filtration bed. This bed would help provide a water quality benefit by filtering out total suspended solids and phosphorus, as well as helping with manage the temperature of runoff. So providing a filter media and that residence time for runoff to filter through the media helps manage the temperature control of runoff, which is the primary consideration when discharging towards a, a trout stream and a special waterway. The basins have also been designed to meet all city and state stormwater requirements related to rate control, making sure that our rate of discharge doesn't exceed the rate of discharge today. Maintain those drainage patterns so that where water discharges today, it discharges in the future. And also the state requirement of volume and control. When you look at the placement of our stormwater basins as well as the preservation of existing wetlands, you can see the effort that went into the site planning to try to preserve and maintain the natural resources of the site. If we flip to the next slide, just to help orient everybody, so these are some perspective views. These two in particular are on the north side of the property. On the right side of the image would be Morris Thomas Road. So you can see a little graphic of a car. To the left of that vehicle then would be the north end of the private development. We wanted to show this just because there's so much topography across the site, even in existing conditions, there's more than 100 feet of elevation change. In the proposed conditions, there would be some balancing to reduce that total differential. But as far as a visual and screening consideration goes, we are trying to take advantage of the natural topography to provide some screening. We're also providing, as Brian mentioned, a robust perimeter landscape plan. Within these landscape sections, there's, you'll notice some shading or some color coding to those plantings. That's intended to highlight, you know, a general time lapse of that landscaping, so showing from darker to lighter, a progressive growth of, of those plantings between one and 30 years. If we go to the next slide, these are looking north on Midway Road. And this really helps illustrate the benefit of the earthen berm and the sound wall in relation to the height of the site internally.
So that's the information that we've put together, trying to highlight a little bit more of the technical specifics of the project. Certainly appreciate you guys having us here and allowing us to give some additional details of what we've been working on and stand for any questions that you may have for us.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion for personal privilege. Take a, for a five minute break.
And we will pause for five minutes and then we will move on to.
We're going to have the presentation by Minnesota Power and then we'll open it for public comment.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, folks, are you ready to get started again? You ready? It's on.
Just saying.
How's that? Now it's okay. We're ready to get started again? Mr. Mulder?
So as, so as part of the, the presentation, we're going to have a representative from Minnesota Power come up. There's a lot of questions about power usage and the impact on power for a data center. So we've asked Minnesota Power to address that issue.
Good evening, Mayor Boucher, councilors and staff. My name is Julie Pierce. I'm the Vice President of Strategy and Planning for Minnesota Power. I'm responsible for the long-term planning and strategy and origination for Minnesota Power. Really pleased to be here this evening to be able to share a few thoughts and comments regarding electricity and how it's utilized and how you can hook up and become a new customer for Minnesota Power. I've been in the energy industry over 28 years and I've been with Minnesota Power for 18 years. I've had the privilege to be able to be part of this beautiful region for 18 years and the robust electric infrastructure that has been created over that timeframe. We have a long history, over 100 years of serving electric customers, residential, commercial, cabins, large industry. We actually have 155,000 customers that we serve in northeast Minnesota, including this great city. We also serve some of the largest industrial customers in the nation. We are a 24 by 7 electric provider. Our product is electricity and it's measured in milliseconds. We must be reliable, affordable, and accessible. It's our responsibility and our obligation. So if someone wants more electricity and wants to join this great region, they need to go through a pretty rigorous, robust process to ensure that they have the access and availability to that infrastructure. Requests come in all the time from new residents, new commercial businesses, from car washes to new commercial buildings to new industrial expansions and new possibilities. Just this year, we've had hundreds of these interconnection or grid connect requests. Those grid connect requests go through, as I mentioned, a very disciplined, rigorous study process to ensure that there isn't going to be impact to the grid, or if there is, that it's mitigated so that we can continue to provide our seven by 24 reliable power around the clock at a reasonable cost. For large customers, like what we're talking about here, you heard about the project, they came to us with a request to interconnect to the grid, to connect. They wanted to connect right next door to where their project is at our Arrowhead substation. We took that interconnection grid connect request in with all of the other requests that we have. As I mentioned, we have several of these at any given point in time. That study goes on for months. It looks at not only the local area and city and neighborhood, it goes beyond to county, region, states, and even multiple states beyond us, excuse me. That study ensures that the power consumption by the new customer does not have negative impact and can be accommodated. If there's any needs for the system to be upgraded, there is a very rigorous process to identify what those are. We have a great team at Minnesota Power that studies this on an ongoing basis. Anything that's identified during those studies needs to be paid for and responsible for by the interconnection customer. This is similar if you wanted to put a new service in your garage, or if you wanted to build a business on your property, you would contact Minnesota Power. We would work with you and identify what the needs are for you to do that, whether it's underground, a cable to your garage, put a new meter on your house, or your business. And then we would identify what those costs are and then you would have the choice about whether or not you would want to stay with your plan or if you would like to not build that extra garage or that business expansion. So it's a process, it's iterative, and we study to ensure that the reliability of the system is maintained. Once a customer decides they do want to come join Minnesota Power, we ensure those studies are finalized and all of the impacts are looked at, and then we have them sign an agreement. It's called an interconnection agreement. It's governed by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC. They sign this agreement, which says that they will be responsible to pay for any line upgrades, substation upgrades, regional upgrades, even outside the borders of this town, they would be responsible for paying for those costs. That is a signed contract, is filed with FERC, and that is what allows them to become an interconnected customer with Minnesota Power. Similar things go for commercial and residential customers. The power supply, which is also a very important part of the equation for providing electric service, is provided through long-term planning and looking at what would be needed if we had new load come to our customer base at Minnesota Power. There is a long-range planning process called the Integrated Resource Plan that is governed by the Public Utilities Commission of Minnesota. Minnesota is one of the highest, most robustly regulated states in terms of electric infrastructure and service in the United States. That plan identifies what would happen if we would add additional load to our grid and what happens if we have to contract and lose load from our grid, which sometimes happens. That plan identifies each step, every resource, every new renewable resource, every wire that's needed, and is approved by the Public Utilities Commission. We are not able to build stuff without permission from the Public Utilities Commission. We also have a very robust policy in the state around clean energy. We have a mandate for 2040 to ensure that we have clean energy serving our customers. I'd like to say that Hermantown and Minnesota Power customers already enjoy a 50 to 60% renewable power supply right now. And we have plans in place through our Integrated Resource Plan by 2035 to be 95% renewable energy. The requirements of the state require, even if our load grows, that we must continue to meet those goals and mandates for cleaner, renewable, reliable, and affordable energy. And that is governed by the Public Utilities Commission on a regular basis each time we would like to make an addition of a new load or a new generation resource. It is our job and our privilege and our responsibility to ensure that there are its reliable electric service. So why we have to serve these new loads? Why do we want to serve new load? We want to serve new load because additional customers provide benefits to all customers. Specifically, additional customers help pay the mortgage. I like to use mortgage as an example. If you have more people living in your house paying the mortgage for all of your infrastructure and costs, then that burden is a lot less for all of the rest of the mortgage holders. It's similar with electric service. The more customers we have to share and spread the costs of our electric infrastructure in this region to keep it. of our electric infrastructure in this region to keep it robust, reliable, and available is spread over more more customers, more users. And that is a sharing that helps reduce the burden of our cost. Furthermore, there's other protections, customer protections that are in place. Minnesota, as I mentioned, is a very robust, forward thinking state, not only in its electric service and planning, but also on where we are going as a state. In twenty twenty five, they passed landmark legislation specifically around data centers coming to our state. They wanted to make sure that as new customers in this new industry came to our state, that we had consumer protections, both electricity, water, and environmental protections to ensure that we could do it right here in this state. This legislation identifies clearly that if a new data center is to connect anywhere in the state of Minnesota, that existing customers cannot be impacted. Furthermore, they have to provide additional benefits. So the legislation is a great framework and a very useful framework as we're moving here in northeast Minnesota, considering the potential for data centers. Minnesota Power is confident in the reliability of our grid that we've built up to serve the largest industrial customer seven by twenty four for the past century. We're committed to achieving our carbon free goals and proud to support the new economic investment in our region. Our strong and talented team is ready to assist with any questions as you continue through these early stages of consideration in this public process. And we thank you for your public service and your consideration of the Herman Town proposal and this community. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our presentations, Mr. Mulder.
Yeah, so just a couple of reminders. We wanted to go through some of this extra information relative to the project, even though doesn't really apply to rezoning, but we know that those you can't entirely separate them. This provided some additional information about the project. Just a couple of reminders for the public is that speakers are asked to provide their name and address. The speaker should address the city council with their comments. And we ask that everybody be respectful of all voices and allow everybody to speak so that every voice can be heard.
We did say earlier, we're gonna have a few moments here for councilors to ask questions. Mr. LeBlanc had some.
Yeah, I was asked to reiterate some of the questions we had talked about pre agenda, so probably a good time to do that now. I'm gonna try to go in order by group, so. For Mortensen, I just question, has any consideration been given to sightlines on the south of the building, south of the facility for the homes along Seagull River Road?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have not produced a cut section for that area, but there is a substantial buffer that's naturally provided on the south edge of the property with existing vegetation as well as Minnesota Power's existing three forty five lines that go east west. That's something that we can definitely produce in the future moving forward, but we don't have a necessarily a graphic at this point.
Yeah, I just know it's one of the things I was at the meeting in Solway last night. That was one thing that was brought up and we've given some consideration to the view from the roads. Just want to make sure that those people that own homes along there are protective is probably the wrong word, but.
Absolutely, we can take a note of that.
Let's see here. We talked about site layout. Maybe just one thing to note for everyone here. I know there's been a lot of talk about the council keeping secrets from people. This presentation tonight that we got is the first time that we as councilors have seen this information. And I know a lot of the questions I had with section views was very helpful for what it's gonna look like. One question from last night's meeting in Solway, air pollution, has any, is there any measurable air pollution that's gonna be produced by this data center? I don't think that's been addressed at any point yet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this point, we're still evaluating potential permitting options or needs for the facility and whether there's the requirement to work with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for any type of air permit. So that's something that we are still looking into.
Okay, let's see here. And then we talked about noise. The city has an ordinance and we're gonna work on how we're gonna enforce that. Eric, can you please expand on that?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have multiple opportunities through different, either the development agreement, conditions placed upon special use permits or the CIDP that we can tie to basically noise or sound associated with that. There's been some discussion of pre agenda, what happens if they exceed the allowed decibel level and we have the opportunity to address that further in those agreements that way. That should they actually exceed those amounts that they have X number of time to rectify and and basically solve that issue.
Okay. Well, we're working on this end of the table, I suppose. David, could, there was a note on the presentation that the facility is gonna use between two and five percent of the water. It's my understanding that the site is gonna put us, you know, if we were to add no water towers, it would put us at our maximum. Can you kind of explain how that's gonna affect our water?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. So the city of Herman Town on a maximum day in the in the summer would use about seven hundred thousand gallons. And we have capacity of seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And our average is about four hundred thousand gallons a day. So the the thirty to fifty thousand gallons that the project has said they're gonna use falls in that two to five percent range of our of our average. In addition to that usage, there's a public infrastructure piece of this project and as part of that, a new elevated water tower that will have approximately one million gallons will be added to our system to further, you know, support the the extension to the to the Adolf area and also give the city capacity in the future. And there was a one other thing. The the city of Duluth that we have been in contact with in regards to modeling and the water supply. They've indicated to us that they have a one point five million gallons of water would be able be supplied to the city of Herman Town without any system upgrades on on their system.
Awesome. Let's see here, traffic. We saw nineteen hundred additional trips a day in that area. I think we had some numbers from the existing study in regards to the bridge that they're proposing down there. Can you maybe elaborate for everybody on how many trips there are currently and what percent increase we're gonna see?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So part of part of our effort with the the agencies that deal with the traffic, St. Louis County and and MinDOT, we looked at the traffic counts on each of the legs of the roads that will support this facility. So Midway Road, which is a county road, has just over nine thousand cars per day on average right now. And this development at full campus build out, we're projecting nineteen hundred. So it's about a twenty to twenty five percent increase in traffic at that Morris, Thomas, and Midway Road intersection. And as it gets to that intersection, then it, you know, it it dissipates or not dissipates, but it goes either north or south. So the projections are they're split up once you, once you leave the site.
I guess the last thing I had, you know, in my mind, this project, the the biggest benefit to Herman Town is gonna be the lowering of residential taxes and commercial. Not owning any commercial property in Herman Town, I'm more concerned with residential ones. When do you think we'll have that projection on, you know, and and then will we have a production, projection for as it's built out the impact? Or are we just gonna have a final projection?
Mayor Boucher, Councilor LeBlanc, we are currently working with Ellers, who is our public finance consultant, to do some modeling on what the tax revenues will be. We're working in partnership with the county to understand what the estimated values of the buildings will be so we can do that. It's a little too preliminary because we haven't, we haven't really dialed in with the county what those values will be to produce accurate numbers. We expect to continue to work through that over the course of the next couple of months. That information will be a part of the development agreement discussion. So development agreements are used to hold developers to a certain number of things and included in that will be a minimum assessed value. So we will require that the buildings for the term of the development agreement will be assessed at a minimum, minimum, so that our tax forecasts will be will be held through contract so that we can rely dependably, dependably on those numbers going forward. So within the next couple of months, we should have more refined numbers, but but more to come around the development agreement time.
I know I, for one, wouldn't be comfortable voting on anything tax center or tax center, data center specific without knowing the potential benefit for the city of Herman Town. That being said, I, you know, what's on the agenda tonight? Not exactly data center specific, right? We're rezoning property that. Anyway. And then as far as we talked about off ramps and schedule, as far as other actions for the city council that are gonna need to be taken, can you elaborate on those? Or John, can you elaborate on on what's coming down the pipe?
Well, yeah, this this is, tonight's vote is not an approval by itself of a data center. There will be a number of other documents and permits that will need to come through planning and zoning and then ultimately some of them back to city council. But there'll also be well and replacement plans, development agreements, all of those things will ultimately have to come back to the city council. This is a step in that process.
And then as we're talking here, one more thing occurred to me and then I promise I'll give the mic to the rest of the council. If this project were not to happen and we rezone tonight, do those homes then become legal nonconforming? And then what does that mean for future subdivisions if people wanna, you know, build a house for their children on their property, that sort of thing? Is that allowed under the zoning? How how will that work?
He's the zoning expert.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, we have a perfect example is up at Air Base and Sunby Road. It's owned BLM and if you drive up there, it's predominantly single family structures. So probably two, three times a year, we get a call from someone, I want to put an addition on, I want to put a deck on. Like you said, yes, these are viewed as legal nonconforming structures that way. We view with, let's say if the structure burns down, you have the ability to rebuild it. We have the ability to do work on the property, not taking away your rights that way. So yes, this would still be able to function as a residential unit, assuming it falls under the BLM. We view it, like we said, as a legal nonconforming.
So if somebody wanted to build a new home over there, they'd still be able to do that?
Assuming that they would continue to meet the residential setbacks associated with it, assuming the setbacks associated with that district. Yeah, we'd look at that.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other councilors have anything else? Okay, now we're gonna move into the public input section. I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. If I do, please, when you step to the podium, correct me on my pronunciation. I have four pages of lists here and I don't know if there's any more after that, but the first person on this list is Frankie Falegi.
My name is Frankie Falegi. I live at nineteen oh five East Third Street, Duluth. I'm speaking here today as a citizen. I also happen to be a local journalist. I would like to use this time to publicly ask questions from our constituents. Questions I have compiled for you here today. These are not my questions, but those of my neighbors, our students, our volunteers, our supporters of this beautiful community and lake, our aunties and grandmothers, our teenagers and workers that you all represent. And if you're wondering why I'm wearing red just like all of these dissenters wear, it just happens to be my color. I'm a warm autumn. Are you aware, are you aware how many people are in the overflow room? Are you aware of the massive folks who marched here and the dozens of folks who stood on the curb in dissent while the pre agenda meeting was happening? Are you aware there are only five, five of you councilors? I quote, what is the name of the Fortune Fifty Company proposing this project? I quote, what is the project? When will you tell your constituents, the folks most impacted by this? Quote, can you please give us more information? Quote, why us? Why here? Simply why? Quote, how much money were you bribed by to stay quiet about this? Quote, why are you so afraid to inform citizens? Quote, are you aware the city of Herman Town was, believe it or not, based on its name, meant to be a town of royal significance and to keep its green, faraway wooded charm? Quote, do you believe you are doing the right thing for this community, this watershed and this earth? Quote, will you consider delaying this rezoning vote? Quote, do you know what it is actually like to live near a data center? Quote, is this project substantially negative for the environment, our power bills, and our community? Regarding the NDAs, I quote, what on earth? Aren't they legally or morally obligated to disclose everything they know about whatever is being planned? Quote, have any assurances been made that while infrastructure is being developed, there won't be mobile natural gas generators running to meet the data center's power demands as it ramps up? Quote, for comparison, are you aware of any four hundred acre plus projects with forty plus acre buildings in our area? Quote, is Blackrock going to own the power plants and the data center? Quote, doesn't this mean they will, sorry, quote, this means they won't squeeze the lifeblood out of our community, right? They won't make things worse every single year for forever, right? Quote, sad, ain't it? Quote, what is this for? Quote, AI in general, is it worth the resources for what it is giving humanity? Is it worth the energy it takes? Does it have a purpose? Or is it just to make millionaires or is it just to make billionaires into trillionaires, expensive, ordinary? Quote, where does Herman Town get its water? From Duluth, which is right from our lake? If this is so wonderful, why haven't those Herman Town officials who've been changing the zoning been bragging about their new development? Why so hush, hush? Quote, I doesn't keep Nelson give a, and I quote, shit about us. Quote, do you? Quote, if integrity is doing the right thing when no one is looking, what do you call the absolute worst thing when everyone is watching? Quote, if this moves forward, we utilize more wind, solar, or renewable energy. Quote, do you even realize how valuable our acres of forests are? Quote, do you generally think that because something is illegal, then it must be fine? Quote, why are you using, instead of referring to this project? Quote, why is this larger than the entire UMD college campus? Quote, which of these problems do you draw the line at? Quote, when is enough enough? Quote, this is suspicious, no? Quote, why does this city seem to be rushing into this? Quote, would this be an AI data center? Quote, why are you withholding information from residents and neighbors? Quote, do the desires of the few men who are white men in front of us matter more than anyone else? Quote, are you embarrassed by your behavior in this project thus far? Quote, do you sweep blood at night? Do your children really know what you are supporting here? Quote, why are you looking to rezone this light industrial instead of heavy industrial, as many similar cities with similar projects say is not accurate or sufficient? Quote, on a scale of one to ten, how much money is, how much is money the driving force behind your decisions to push this along quite quickly and secretly thus far? Quote, if this project moves forward, are you aware constituents do indeed have power to not let this move forward? Be a protest, legal action, activism, and spreading public awareness? Quote, is there a single bone in your body that thinks maybe this is not actually a sustainable, good, honest idea? Quote, have you considered you may be being lied to by giant companies that do not have your best interests at heart but revolve solely around making more money? Quote, do you enjoy the taste of these companies boots? Quote, how many times will you listen to your constituents screams, angers, question, confusion, and betrayal with this straight face? Quote, are you aware NPR News is covering this? MSN, our local news outlets? Are you prepared to be a household name, a household joke? Quote, are you confident this data center would not become irrelevant amid our quickly advancing technology in the coming decades? Quote, do you care about keeping your constituents living in and loving Herman Town? Quote, do you enjoy Lake Superior? Do you care about it? Why do you care about it? Quote, why isn't last, the last city council meeting published on the YouTube channel? Quote, why isn't last, the last city council meeting published on the YouTube channel yet? Quote, are you sadists? Quote, and I, and I quote, what the actual fuck? Quote, do you hear us? Quote, when will you do the right thing? Quote, why aren't you now? I skipped a few.
Thank you for your input. Your questions were more of an interrogation, but you've used up a lot of other people's time tonight. We're going to move forward slowly and we're going to stick with decorum, a three-minute limit for every speaker unless they receive three minutes seated from someone else. Next on the list is Matt Baumgartner. Matt, are you present?
You have three minutes. Good evening, Mayor, counselors and distinguished staff members. My name is Matt Baumgartner. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Louis County, Duluth and a generational northeastern Minnesotan. I'll start by saying this, if you showed up tonight because you care about Hermantown's future, you're in the right place. I thought I was going to say that if you showed up for drama, you may have taken a wrong turn somewhere in social media, but it seems that not everybody got that memo. So I would hope that we can keep this about solutions and not about sides. We are all neighbors in Duluth, Hermantown and the surrounding communities and we have to continue to be neighbors. I've spent my career working in business, finance and community leadership and I'm here tonight in support of the rezone. There's been a lot of noise lately about NDAs and let's be honest, non-disclosure agreements are nothing new. They're a normal, responsible part of the economic development process. They let investors and local governments explore opportunities and run the numbers before anything becomes public. That's how you do it right. Turning it into a controversy misses the point. It confuses confidentiality with secrecy and that kind of distraction doesn't move our community forward. Now this vote tonight is not the end of the public process. It's far from it. There will be plenty of opportunities for questions, review and for people to have their say as the project evolves. But let's zoom out for a second. We all carry smartphones. We all use laptops, stream movies and backup our photos in the cloud that's powered by data centers. The question isn't if we have them, it's when and how they're built. If we build it here, we're next to a transmission hub. No better place than that. We can be leaders and put it next to infrastructure that can handle it, minimizing any new extensions. Additionally, state law passed and supported by environmental groups in twenty twenty five requires cost increases to serve new large data centers cannot be passed on to any other customers. Hermantown has a chance here to lead, to show how modern technology and infrastructure development can be done responsibly, ethically and with an eye towards the environment. Hermantown can be the community that models how to grow smart, not just big. So let's stay focused on what's real, not get distracted by social media comments and let's give this project a fair shot, do our due diligence and show that progress and responsibility can go hand in hand. Do we want to be leaders or do we want to be users of what other parts of the country and world produce or build with lower standards than ours? Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Hawkins. Katie Hawkins. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing my comments. I was not expecting to go this early. I, I'm sorry. My name is Katie Hawkins. I live in, on Stubner Road, uh, three six eight three Stubner Road. And pardon me, I just want to make sure. Yeah, my name is Katie Hawkins. I'm a Hermantown resident. Thank you for recognizing me and our community who have come here tonight. I am providing comment for myself as a concerned citizen and I'm urging the council to vote no to the motion to rezone this evening and here's why. Sorry, I'm feeling a little nervous. Recent documents have come to light through FOIA requests and have been circulated in the community showing that city administrators have been working with private businesses for years on a proposal, I'm sorry, on a proposed hyperscale data center for the Hermantown area. There have been backdoor meetings with city administrators along with other businesses and elected officials to pave the way for this project to be possible without the public recognizing what has hit us. Many of us, including some of you, are just finding out the details now. It appears these people have set out to ask for your complicity in this. I understand from recent reports that much of the plan laid before us was planned be prior to your knowledge that this was a hyperscale data center. Very specific and limited information has been shared with the Hermantown City Council in a specific order, at a specific time, with a specific agenda in mind. And the drivers of that process have been the people who have been signing NDAs and having private meetings with these large companies. Mr. Mulder and Mr. Ron Chuddy, to name a few. This is done by design to land in a place where the city moves forward with this project. That is the plan that these companies and individuals have been moving towards all along, prior to your knowledge of even a reasonable fraction of facts. I urge you, as individuals, to look within yourself and recognize what these people are asking you to do. These individuals have worked with private enterprise without full transparency and are asking you to keep the ball rolling. They are asking you to do the next step so they can continue and start clearing land for development with phrases like, we can write that into the contract and we can make sure and take care of that along the way. Don't worry, we are far from a done deal. I assure you that the longer you move forward on their timeline, you will be complicit without recognizing what you have done. These individuals are putting to you, this project is a way to try to support our community and the upcoming tax burden before us. How unfair. How unfair is it that administrators have been seemingly working with large amounts of their time on solely this development? How unfair is it that they've put you to that this is the best option to support a reduction in taxes? Last comments I'd like to provide is I personally attended the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board meeting this last week and members of that board said on the meeting that there is no other project in the state of Minnesota to have a basis to really draw from to give us the correct data that we need at this time to move forward and, and to really have the right rules to move forward with that. It was a lot of good discussion. I would encourage you, if you're a council member and you have not seen that, I would recommend that you definitely take the time to do that. And I would just please urge you to vote no on the rezone for tonight. This does not mean that we cannot have economic development, but it does mean that you are seeking consent from your constituents and I think you can see that the community is not behind that decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Bradford. I've got Lynn Bradford, is that you? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Bradford. I reside at three five two five Solway Road. I know these words will speak for many. My home is about one-third mile from this rezone location. I've lived here for over forty years in what is referred to as Oak Hill. It is old growth oak, over one hundred years. It harbors habitat from numerous, of numerous species and twenty species of birds I have personally observed. Even a moose a few years ago. As we, as some of us know, that moose was killed on the Morris Thomas Road. Happened to be in my yard one day. You pursue. This area is my sanctuary for myself, my family, my neighbors. This sanctuary is just one of many reasons you are hell-bent on resisting having a real impact study done. You prefer to settle for your own study done by wholly unqualified personnel only to promote your agenda, an agenda that reeks with secrecy, inaccurate information, that lacks transparency and with employees signed to NDAs. Your actions erode our democracy only to create more distrust in elected government. I didn't fight for my country during Vietnam to see it evolved into your tactics. All these people here are trying to convey the same thing. Slow all this down, be honest and just don't try to shove it all down our throats. We don't need more human errors in this process. Excuse me. As was the excuse for the lack of forwarding critical information about this and, uh, this project to individuals with a need to know. It only shows the incompetence of our elected and or appointed officials. Human error is an excuse, not a sound reason. We can't afford human errors with this project. You talked about the future permitting at your last meeting. I wonder if these permits will all just be rubber stamped like this vote you proposed tonight. Let's be honest. You did the current impact study for this project for the developer, the quickest, easiest, least costly, inadequate approach possible. What does it say about the real concerns and your allegiance? Lincoln coined a phrase in the Gettysburg Address. Of the people, by the people and for the people. Those words are still historic today in words we are all asking for from you.
Three, three minutes is up, sir. Thank you. Michael Copy.
Um, Michael Copy, fifty-one twenty-four Beaver Creek Road. As a resident of Hermantown, I am deeply concerned about the proposed one point eight million square foot data center development. While I understand the economic promise of such a project may bring, I believe the current environmental review, the, um, AUAR is not comprehensive enough to ensure the protection of our community's natural resources, especially those within the Lake Superior watershed. The AUAR as approved appears to rely on incompetent or incomplete data, hypothetical scenarios rather than site-specific project-based analysis. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, the Minnesota Center for Economic Advocacy and the local conservation districts have all expressed concerns that the documents lack sufficient, sufficient details regarding groundwater impacts, wetland delineation and trout stream protection. Without knowing the energy demands or the final design specifics, the environmental modeling remains speculative at best. I am not opposed to technology or progress or economic development. I am opposed to development that disregards ecological boundaries and the cumulative impact on the health of our watershed. I respectfully ask you to advocate for the supplemental environmental review or the full environmental statement, the EIS, for the Hermantown site before construction approval is granted. Let's show, let's slow this whole process down, uh, have room for the public input and transparency that should be required for a project of this size. Ten of these data centers are currently proposed in Minnesota. And if all ten were online, they would use as much electricity as the whole state does now. So to double our energy, uh, use as a state would have a big effect on all of us. Encouraging, uh, the redevelopment of previous industrial lands rather than rezoning undeveloped tracts within the sensitive watershed, we have numerous, uh, underutilized and abandoned industrial sites within the Duluth Superior region, um, that could accommodate a large-scale data center without displacing natural habitat or compromising the Lake Superior watershed. Redevelopment, redeveloping existing industrial properties would not only minimize.
That's, that's, sir.
Okay, just a second more. Ecological losses, but also revitalize our community that's already equipped with power sewer and transportation infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Palmer. Eric Palmer.
Well, good evening, Mayor, counselors. Uh, my name is Eric Palmer and I've been a resident of Hermantown for over eighteen years. Uh, my wife and I grew up in the Twin Cities and went to college at University of Minnesota, Duluth. While in school, we fell in love with this area. After school, we moved back to the Twin Cities for work, but visited often for vacation. Five years later, I was offered a great job opportunity in Duluth and we didn't hesitate and we moved up to the Northland. We purchased our first home in Hermantown, started a family and haven't left since. And my story is why I fully support a thoughtful process to evaluate the socioeconomic, community and environmental impacts of a Fortune 50 company locating a large-scale operations in Hermantown. I'm excited about the prospect, the impact the new direct and indirect jobs and construction jobs will have on Hermantown and the greater St. Louis County region. With the recent idling of Tachnite Mines north of here, these are welcomed opportunities for people. They keep families here and the schools and local businesses healthy. For my own family and my neighbors and friends that live in Hermantown that want their kids to know the future is here, not a hundred and fifty miles south of here, a data center located here in Hermantown provides that hope, demonstrating this is where business want to locate, operate and grow because we have the talent here to do this. And I want the city council to know I'm a resident that supports moving this process forward. Furthermore, I'm also excited for the opportunities the additional tax revenue will mean for Hermantown. We enjoy and prosper from the schools, the parks, trail systems here, but know there is more that can be done. Trails that need finishing, parks not reaching their full potential and other infrastructure improvements and opportunities that additional tax revenue will provide that haven't been contemplated yet. In the end, it makes Hermantown a city where families want to live, play and work, a first-class city with modern and diverse amenities residents desire. A Fortune 50 company putting down roots here provide these opportunities that once didn't seem possible. My understanding is that the city of Hermantown had the foresight to develop a long-term development plan, which identified the Adolph area, the land we are talking about here today, for industrial economic growth due to its location to near key, near key infrastructure. I am thankful they took on that task as part of their fiduciary responsibility. Us here as a community, living out the public process and discussing the impacts of locating a data center in Hermantown is a testament to that work. I support the rezoning of the parcels that we can continue the diligence and thoughtful review of the socioeconomic, the community and the environmental impacts of a large-scale data center operations being located here in Hermantown. So thank you.
Thank you. Nick? What is that? Something involved with our sound system? Okay. Nicholas Reinhardt, did I get that right? Hang on a second, Nicholas. We've got something to do here.
So I live on thirty-seven twelve Linda Road in Hermantown.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, would your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mayor and city counselors. My name's Nick Reinhardt. I live at forty-nine seventy-six West Arrowhead Road. First I want to start, I work in local government myself and I know how and I know how challenging it can be to balance growth, opportunity, and community character. I want to start by saying I deeply appreciate the work you and the staff have already put into this process. I know it takes countless hours, public pressure, and tough trade-offs, ones I've made myself, to work on projects like this. So thank you for your thoughtfulness, and I know you've already shown. When I look at this project, I'm not angry. I'm reflective. I recently went back where I grew up in southern Wisconsin. The rural areas I remember, the fields, the farms, the open space, have turned into rows of warehouses and distribution centers. And while that may be progress for some, it felt like the identity of those places had quietly disappeared. That trip reminded me of my family, or why my family chose Hermantown. We came here because it offered what your own city website promises, country living with a small-town community feel that's directly on the Hermantown webpage. That phrase isn't just marketing, it's a reflection of what the people here love most about this city. I also want to acknowledge labor community. Projects like this can mean good jobs for people in our region, and that absolutely matters. But not every project that grows tax base can create jobs is an automatic right fit. I also want to be clear, I'm not opposed to development or even a data center, but this proposal just isn't any data center. This is a hyper-scale facility, 1.8 million square feet. These are massive, energy-intensive operations that reshape a community's footprint in ways smaller projects don't. They draw enormous power, alter land use, and permanently change the surrounding areas. If this were something smaller, I might feel differently today. But the scale of this one just doesn't fit who Hermantown is and who we say we want to be. So tonight, I simply ask this, before taking any action on rezoning, take a step back, look around the room at all these residents here who are coming tonight, and ask yourself, is this the Hermantown we want to become? Thank you for your time, your service, and for the care you bring to this decision.
Thank you. Megan Ellering, L, I can't read what was written here. Megan Ellery? See if someone's coming from the other room. Someone's on the way. Are you Megan? Could you step forward to the podium and start with your name and address?
My name is Megan Elling, and I live at 5969 Morris Thomas Road in Duluth. So like I said, my name is Megan Elling, and I live just over the Hermantown border in Solway Township on Morris Thomas Road, three-quarters of a mile from the proposed data center. Minnesota statute 462.355 says that a proposed comprehensive plan or an amendment to it may not be acted upon by the governing body until it has received the recommendation of the planning agency. A town's comprehensive plan is a legal document that must follow a legal process brought forth by a planning agency, to my understanding, called the steering committee in a small town like Hermantown. To quote an anonymous member of the steering committee, on Tuesday, 10/14, I had a face-to-face conversation with Mr. Ron Chetty at the Solway Town Hall. At this meeting, Mr. Ron Chetty publicly stated that he did modify the 2045 comprehensive report. After the steering committee adjourned, it did not invite the steering committee to review the report prior to introducing it to the planning and zoning board. If I understand the statute correctly, it is illegal to change a comprehensive plan without recommendation or approval by the committee. Also, after reading through the recently released Freedom of Information Request documents from the city of Hermantown, it seems to me the city of Hermantown has been operating deceitfully, dishonestly, unethically, and potentially ignorantly and illegally towards its citizens, the region, and its own city council members. The records from the FOIA requests show the city of Hermantown staff expecting the data center to be approved and working with developers on when construction will begin. Some examples. In Project Loon meeting notes from April 29, 2025, Brian says authorization is expected to be late the week of May 13. Brian noted that every week the authorization pushes delays to the final construction date. Brian noted that tree clearing will occur at the end of winter. On-site activities would begin in spring 2026. Another, hi, any chance you can update these four PDFs that remove references to Project Loon and replace with Adolph Area Utility Study? These are just a few examples I have been able to find in the newly released documents. It seems to me the city of Hermantown staff have been manipulating not just us as citizens to get their way, but you as a city council as well. It seems to me it has already been decided this project will be approved and completed by 2027. It doesn't sound to me like a project that still needs approvals. This sounds like a project that is moving along and cannot be stopped. I'm also upset, as it seems the city of Hermantown and the city council are only considering the benefits for the city of Hermantown. I live just outside the border of Hermantown, and I will only have disadvantages, pollution, potential water supply problems, noise, extreme traffic congestion, which already exists from the M.P. project, and reduced property values. I'm not convinced any economic impact would extend beyond Hermantown and think it will have a net negative effect on the surrounding area. I believe that you are local, honest citizens like us that understand your responsibility, and I hope you take that into consideration, the impacts your decisions will have on other people in the close vicinity outside of Hermantown itself and farther this project would have. I believe the cost this project to our community, society at large, and our beautiful rural land is too great.
That's three minutes.
I ask you to at least pause, vote no for this zoning approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarissa Eck.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to start, oh, Clarissa Eck, 3505 Solway Road in Hermantown. I want to start by reminding you that the citizens of Hermantown and the Adolf community have never desired large development in that area. The city's 2001 comprehensive plan identified most of Adolf as a place where the city should strive to maintain the rural character, preserve natural features, and promote agricultural uses. This was reiterated in the 2015 Adolf Small Area Plan. As we now know, not due to honest and public disclosure by the city, but only after a data request released documents showing that the recommendations of the steering committee were ignored and unilaterally changed to accommodate the development of Project Loon for a still unnamed Fortune 50 company looking to exploit our natural resources and desecrate our rural area. I would like to further remind you of your oath to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of city councillor to the best of your judgment and ability. I want to remind you that it was not the unnamed Fortune 50 company that trusted you to faithfully represent them when they elected you to the position for which you now sit tonight. It was the people behind me, the citizens of Hermantown. I want to remind you that it was not the unnamed Fortune 50 company that you will be seeing as you shop at Super One or Stokies. It will not be the unnamed Fortune 50 company that you will see at locally-owned restaurants having lunch or socializing with your friends. It will not be the unnamed Fortune 50 company that you will be seeing at Fichtner Field or Centricity Stadium or the new hockey arena. It will not be the unnamed Fortune 50 company seeing you at football games, hockey, soccer, or baseball games. It will not be the unnamed Fortune 50 company looking you in the eye. It will be us, the residents of Hermantown and neighboring communities, the people behind me. It will be your friends, your neighbors, the citizens you were elected to represent. It will be us that you have to look in the eye after you vote yes to this rezone. The unnamed Fortune 50 company will not be the ones electing you again when your term is up. It will be the people in this room. The unnamed Fortune 50 company will not be asking you why their property values plummeted, why their utility rates have soared, why they were assessed for water and sewer lines they didn't need, why their taxes have increased, or why they are no longer safely able to fish the rocky run. We need a David to this Goliath. We need you to follow through with your oath to do what is right for the citizens that elected you, not follow the shiny promises of big money while they rape our land of its natural resources. Please do not placate us with the idea that this rezone is not a big deal or that it doesn't guarantee the start of a data center or future development. It does. We've seen the plan for this project, the city's commitment to clear trees by the end of this winter and hide behind false statements and misleading information. Vote no to this rezone. Admit that you don't have the problem or the information you need to thoughtfully and carefully make an informed decision. You did not take an oath to represent the interests of Fortune 50 companies. You took an oath to represent the citizens of Hermantown who are overwhelmingly and passionately against this rezone. Vote no so that I and the others behind me can see you at Stokies, see you at Skyline, at the next football game, the next hockey game, and in the community, and walk up to you and shake your hand and say thank you for doing what was right, doing what you promised and swore you would do. Be our David to this Goliath. Be our hero tonight. Be your children's hero, my children's hero, and the next generation of Hermantown children's heroes.
We're quite a bit over three minutes.
Be proud of yourself tonight. Vote no, and if you can't do that, move to table the vote on the rezone so that you can make a thoughtful and informed decision, and the residents of Hermantown have the opportunity to provide a meaningful response. Thank you.
Deb Flynn. Deb Flynn? Deb Flynn, oh. Yeah, Deb Flynn. Anyone coming down the hall? Deb Flynn? One minute. What's that?
They'd like to know who's on deck so we can speed it up.
Next one on deck is Nate Ricard. Hi, name and address, please.
My name is Deb Flynn, 5863 St. Louis River Road. And my greatest concern with this project is my husband and I just built a brand-new home we started last year. We're selling the home we're in right now. Moving into the new home, we haven't been able to sell our old house. I'm very bothered by this data center. I'm going to ask you to please do not pass this. We'd like to enjoy our new home that we just built. We are very sad about this. So please. And if I ask each and every one of you, would you like it in your backyard? Because that's where it's going to be, in my backyard, if you pass this. I don't want it in my backyard. I want to enjoy my place. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Ricard, and the next person up is Carrie Heron.
Nate Rickard, 4878 Trails End Drive, Hermantown, Minnesota. I just wanted to take a second and thank everybody here for trying to come up with ideas to try to increase their tax base around here. This is just for the rezoning, right? And I think I'm in favor of rezoning for that purpose, to try to increase their tax base. The last eight years, my taxes almost doubled as living in Hermantown. And I just, I know everybody's been getting a lot of flack here, but I just wanted to, want to thank you. I would encourage more information to come out on the project, on the data center. I think we need more information on it. Hopefully, it should benefit our community, not hurt it. I'm in favor of the data center as long as it's done with union labor. We have a lot of good local union labor here that would be happy to man it and provide for it, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Heron is next, and after him is Bart Smith. Or her, whatever. Sorry. Bart Smith is up next.
Hi, my name is Carrie Heron. I live at 37 Fourth Street in Proctor. So being a Proctor resident, I found out about this project fairly recently. And in the last couple of weeks that I've been involved in this, I've just been shocked by the level of secrecy surrounding this project, the pace that it's moving, everything's moving very fast. And it does feel very suspicious. It feels like, you know, only someone with something to hide tries to keep the public in the dark about it. If this data center was truly going to be great for the city and the region, you guys would be shouting it from the rooftops, if only to score political brownie points for the next election. Instead, we hear about signing non-disclosure agreements, people getting cut out of the loop in planning meetings, and just generally doing your best to avoid public detection. So now that we've finally caught up to you over the last couple of years, citizens from Hermantown and the surrounding region are coming together to tell you that we don't want this. We don't want skyrocketing electricity bills and plummeting water quality. We don't want noise pollution, light pollution, water pollution. We don't want to see forests become deserts of concrete. What we want is for you guys to do your jobs and talk to your constituents, tell them what you're doing, and listen to what we have to say. And if you vote to rezone the land tonight, we will show up to the permitting meeting tomorrow, and we will talk to you then. And if you vote to approve those permits, we will come to the next meeting. We will continue to fight you on this every step of the way. And you won't be hiding behind NDAs and closed-door meetings anymore. The whole state is watching, Star Tribune, NPR. Everybody's watching, and we're finding out more and more. And the more I find out about it, the less I like it, and the more I want to keep getting involved. So we deserve to know what our elected representatives are doing, and we have a right to voice our dissent. So please hear us and vote no to the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bart Smith. Bart Smith. Is Kirk Ilanda? Anybody coming down the hall from the other room? Bart Smith? Nobody responding. We will move on to Kirk Ilanda. And after that is Joanne Bates. Name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. It's Kirk Ilanda, 3913 North 21st Street, Superior, Wisconsin. Again, my name is Kirk Ilanda. I'm vice president with Business Development with Lakewood Constructors. And I am here in support of rezoning for the data center. Lakewood Constructors, we are a 110-year-old construction company based in Superior, Wisconsin, with an office on the Iron Range, and we employ 500-plus building tradespeople throughout this region. Ninety percent of our work is completed within 90 miles of the Twin Ports. Our company relies on new construction projects much like this in our region to keep our local workforce employed, many of which live in Hermantown. And many more of our ironworkers, carpenters, and millwrights have been trained right here in Hermantown, all of which, these jobs make great wages, great benefits. Some perspective as an area construction firm. We have had a nice run in this area of work, some nice boom-type projects, you know, from the Ascension Hospital project down in Duluth, the Twin Ports Interchange project, and the Superior refinery rebuild. As a construction organization, I know we've been able to keep a lot of our locals working right here, where they can sleep in their own beds. A lot of people, we've also had a lot of people come from out of the area, up from the Twin Cities. They've worked for us and other construction companies for the past four to five years. As you've probably heard earlier tonight, many of them fell in love with working in the Northland, and they love to stay here. I get them every day coming to me and saying, Kirk, where is our next project for Lakewood Constructors or other construction firms? Wouldn't it be nice if we could stay here? So hats off to people that put on their economic development hat and can figure out how to keep some of these great jobs and these great construction projects coming your area. I think that we need more regional communities to say yes to developments so that we can creep our tradespeople here in our region that we live in versus where we see a lot of our tradespeople going, they're heading out to Fargo and Grand Forks. They're heading down to Minneapolis. Now they're all heading down to Rochester. And I just speak so everybody knows, like, hey, we want to keep our tradespeople here locally. Right now, I think for some perspective in America, you've probably heard this, there's over 200 data centers in construction or planning for construction within the next year. This is just one of the biggest sectors in America right now. Right, wrong, or otherwise, I look at construction spending in the United States. It's amazing how the current top four spenders of construction, it's Amazon, Microsoft, Google, and Facebook. They're all looking for places to house these data centers. And as an economic development guy, I always say, why not here? Let's have it here. Our regions should find a way to take advantage of this economic opportunity as it will provide several years of good-paying construction jobs, permanent, you know, living wage jobs, and really a great property tax value here in Hermantown. A data center would be a catalyst for our region to bring additional growth of other advanced manufacturing, technology firms, and service providers, fostering a regional a regional ecosystem of innovation, talent, and support industries. And if I can go a little bit off-script, I-
Sir, sir, your three minutes is up. If you could try and wrap it up. Thank you. Next is Joanne Bates, and on deck is Mandy McDonald. Hi, name and address, please.
My name is Joanne Bates, and I live at 5369 Morris Thomas Road. And last time when I spoke, I think I couldn't be heard. So, please let me know if you could hear me. I intend to not be up here very long, and I would love to cede my time if necessary to the next person. My concern is that we have heard a lot of promises of the way this is going to work out really well for all of us. And with many of these people, I worry because it isn't the story that I'm hearing around the nation. I hope you are true in what you're telling us. I would really like to know how much I will be charged when the sewer and water goes right by my house. I already have a septic. I already have a well that I paid for, and I don't want to pay for this going by my house. It would have been years and years from now when anybody would have decided to run it past my house. These are big properties. Five acres is a limit, and it's much, many, many feet of sewer. And so, I do ask you to please vote no on the redistricting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mandy McDonald, Mandy McDonald, and on deck is Mark Hummel. Name and address, please.
Mandy McDonald, 3904 Ranky Road. So, this project would be disastrous for the environment and the community. I am most concerned about the 400 acres being of forest and wetland being ruined. And also, I wanted to mention this heavy focus there is on economic growth with no concern for the environment. It's destroying the planet, and tech's not going to save us, and money's not going to have any value without clean water and clean air for us. I'd love to see at least one of you realize this is a mistake before it's too late to say, "No, this is wrong. We can't do this." You have an opportunity to turn this around right now, and you've got an entire community that would love you for it. Please vote no on the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Jack?
Gentlemen, my name is Mark Hummel. I live at 5195 LeBake Junction Road in Hermantown. Why so secretive about this whole topic? It's really not a good look. It sets my imagination on fire, and thoughts crowd my mind like, like, what's the price for trying to sneak this topic past people you were elected to serve? Or thoughts like, if it's a legitimate process, why so secretive about it? You have an obligation to the citizens of Hermantown, not developers who conned you or maybe your staff into signing nondisclosure agreements. I understand nondisclosure agreements for protecting trade secrets or technical processes, but they are entirely inappropriate the way I understand them to have been used in this circumstance. But it's not too late to do the right thing, to honor your oath of office, and perhaps claw back some of the incredibility you have lost with over 200 people here tonight. Postpone the zoning vote and honor your obligation. Restart this process. Acknowledge the heavy industrial nature of the proposal. Involve the public for real, and insist on a legitimate assessment of social, economic, and environmental impacts. I believe the right thing to do is postpone the vote until these things are complete. To approve the zoning change now just makes it look like you've already decided to approve the project. And if I'm wrong about some details here, consider that a reason to be more forthright, clear, and transparent in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gail, you're next, and the next person on the list up on deck is David De Pasquale.
My name is Gail Johnny Jack. I live at 5195 LeBake Junction Road, Hermantown. It's blown me away that this is the first time the plans are being shown to you guys. It makes me feel like you don't know what's going on, like your NDA staff has done NDAs and they're a run amok, and that it is totally greased before it's even a done deal, before it's, yeah, that's what I feel like. Now, this feels shady as heck. Records show this was happening by the spring of '24. Secrets are kept because people know there's something wrong or misleading about what they're doing. We voted for you. We trusted you, and now there's NDAs and a total lack of transparency. You've broken our trust. And you, Wayne, I know you. I didn't think this would be you. Data centers, data center disputes are all over the country. This is big money versus us regular people. They don't care about us. Honestly, they don't care about you. They talked you into it by dangling shiny dollars and tiny number of jobs in exchange for a huge impact on the environment and on people's health, well-being, and quality of life. Why do we live here? Because of the suburban rural feel and connection. Protecting the character of Hermantown is why it became its own community, and this project feels way outside the realm of protecting the character of Hermantown. We're close to shopping, music, sports, good education. Those things won't change, but it's also quiet with clean water and clean air. We can see the night sky, the Big Dipper and Orion. These things are important for our mental health and well-being. Experience from other data center communities shows that we will pay in higher utility bills, including higher utility bills for our already existing businesses. Noise that can lead to trouble sleeping, headaches, anxiety, hypertension, air pollution that can contribute to asthma, COPD, cardiovascular problems, light at night that can increase risks of obesity, sleep disorders, depression, and diabetes. And there's more. We love Hermantown and our neighboring communities, but this is a game to them, to big money. They don't need our subsidies, or tax breaks. They go fishing for places to make money off our land, utilities, and water. They are using us. Articles I've read refer to company greenwashing of concerns. They say all the right things up front, and later come the loopholes. This won't work, but that's okay. We got you. All while we give away the farm, literally. Some of us may leave Hermantown. Will it be harder to sell? Will we get less money? Does anybody really want to live by a data center? Do you? There's still time. Oh, wait. Can you, I don't know. I'm angry. Can you hear that? And if you're saying to yourselves, "You all just don't understand," well, that's just condescending. We're not stupid. Table tonight and talk with us. That's what we need, real conversation before the vote. There is still time. Tonight's vote can be a pause, a chance to regain our trust, a chance to look at all of the impacts, pros and cons. I'm not against economic development.
I'm sorry, we've passed three minutes.
Okay, maybe you, together, all agree to vote yes, or you signed an NDA and are obliged to have the trees down by winter. Just know you're each responsible for your own vote. You'll each carry the weight and responsibility of your vote and the consequences of this project for the rest of your life. You can vote no any moment until you can't. Vote no tonight. Take a moment to dig deeper. Help us trust you again. Help us trust the community again. Help us be a community again.
Thank you, David. Next. Next on deck is Andy Pelland. Name and address, please.
Hi, David De Pasquale, 5332 Norwood Street, Duluth. Counselors, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here for myself and my neighbors and my son, who is in elementary school. As representatives of everyone here, each of you is negotiating for this project on our behalf. One of the most important rules for negotiation is you have to be willing to walk away if the terms aren't right. You ought to ask yourself, "What would it take for you to walk away from this data center rezoning and vote no?" It does not inspire confidence in this council when you say tonight that you have never heard the presented information before, despite this project being in development since at least the beginning of the year. I hope this means, learning what you have tonight and what your constituents have shared, that you are willing to vote no on the rezoning, despite all of the apparent groundwork that has been laid already for this project. We have heard about the short-term benefits of constructing this data center, but those do not outweigh the long-term costs. And it's you and your neighbors, all of our neighbors, who will bear those costs in the years and decades to come. With respect to Julie's presentation tonight, we know that Minnesota Power is being acquired by a massive investment group, which is banking on increased power rates for everyone in this community to recoup their investment. Even with initial interconnection improvements paid for by the data center project in the short term, over the long term, this will further exacerbate increased demand and cost for electricity across the entire region. I saw in tonight's presentation that these data centers are not using water for cooling, but we know data centers generate significant amounts of heat for all that processing power. That means massive amounts of air conditioning and cooling from our shared electrical grid. If this data center is built, how will the owners pay their fair share of the cost? This is a significant and long-term impact, long after the construction jobs have dried up. Your neighbors will bear the costs of that increase, while Minnesota Power shareholders and data center owners profit. Further, what guarantees does the city have that the proposed data center will be completed in a timely fashion? Eight to 10 years is a long window to capitalize on an AI gold rush that is already being described as a bubble in today's media. What happens if the bubble bursts or investors run out of funding before completion? What guarantees does the city have that this will be a worthwhile, long-term investment, or that the rezoned land will be cared for if the project fails or the data center closes? What is the exit plan if the data center is not completed after initial construction? How will the city repurpose this massive site if the data center closes, and who will bear the cost? We have seen time and again, global communities give away their land and their powers, corporations, and end up with nothing in return, holding the bag when the market shifts or promises fall well short of expectations. I'm sure most of us here are familiar with the thought that when the Foxconn made the search for the government, we have to do better here.
Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion to take another five-minute break.
Okay, five minutes for personal, whatever it's called.
Most personal privilege.
Personal privilege. We'll be back in five minutes. Andy Pelland is next up after that.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, sorry. We need a second on that. We need a second. Okay, all in favor? All right, okay.
Nope, nothing said. We have the vote here. Thank you. Andy Pelland is next, and after Andy on deck is, I think, Kathy Hannan's.
Hello. Andrew Pelland, 5831 St. Louis River Road, Hermantown. I ask you to vote no to the rezoning. I ask that before you vote, you think about the community you represent. We elect you to represent us. We don't elect you to tell us what is best for us. Thank you.
Boy, thanks, Andy. Kathy Hannis, and on deck is Allison Hafton. Name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kathy Hannan. I live at 1501 Third Avenue in Proctor. I am sure Hermantown is not the only community in Minnesota that has proposed a very large development that was not necessarily beloved by the residents of the community. I would suggest that if other communities that have indeed accepted the premise that the project was beneficial for them should be asked, two or three or four years in, "Did it work for you? Are you glad you did it? Were the promises that were made kept? Was the environment appropriately addressed? How many jobs were actually provided that were promised?" If we could learn from communities that have already gone through maybe what we are looking at going through, that would certainly inform our decision and the decisions of many of the people here. I would also say that landscaping a data center site is a fool's errand. I'm a master gardener in St. Louis County. We have a four-month Zone 3 garden season. Wasting precious resource of water to landscape something like that seems to me ridiculous. I would suggest the whole site be ziriscaped and save the water resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, if you could step up and state your name and address. On deck is Andrea Dingman, Denningman?
All right. Allison Hafton, resident of Soulway Township, 5971 St. Louis River Road, Proctor, Minnesota. I do have a question. Will Mortenson be at the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow? Representatives from Mortenson?
I believe so.
Thank you. I have questions to address. I will save them for then regarding the wetlands, regarding the water usage. I will ask them tomorrow, though, to save my time tonight. I do have, would like to address the representative from Minnesota Power. I do have a, would like to address the representative from Minnesota Power. We are already paying the mortgage. We are paying the mortgage for that new substation. Are you going to credit my bills with this apparently sharing of the mortgage that this data center will provide? All right, so, as I said, I'm a resident of Solway. I am the kid who came to school here in college, fell in love with the area and stayed. That's me. I fell in love with the forests, the wildlife, the small-town feel, the lakes and streams. I found what I thought to be my forever home on the other side of Oak Hill. I am here tonight to ask you to vote no on the rezone of the Adolf property to properly make the decision. You say tonight, today's decision is not, is only about the rezone and not about the data center, but we all know one would not exist without the latter. I learned of the project just a couple short weeks ago, but you, along with colleagues in St. Louis County, WLSD, have been secretly working on this for well over a year, yet this is the first time seeing such info presented tonight. Yet you're moving ahead quickly on the special use permits tomorrow. You said yourself, this project requires lengthy and thorough due diligence. You may have legally covered your bases by a hair, but your moral obligations to the surrounding community and your neighbors, your own staff and city processes are falling short. I see decisions made behind closed doors, committee members excluded from planning, and the public denied timely transparency, all because a company put a tempting golden egg in your lap. It is now clear to me just how much behind-the-scenes planning has taken place. I didn't realize that as a Proctor-Solway resident, I should be reading Hermantown City meeting minutes. The area proposed is heavily forested, surrounded by rural residents. It's dark, it's quiet. A rezone to light industrial, especially under your new definition, would have irreversible cascading impacts to the surrounding area. I know why you're picking on rural Adolf in the farthest corner of Hermantown, thinking no one will care, but I'm here to tell you, I care. We care. A project of this magnitude needs significantly greater public input, greater environmental and human impact assessments, and coordinated permitting with surrounding jurisdictions and agencies. Keep Adolf rural, vote no on the rezone tonight. Thank you.
Next is Andrea Dingman. And after Andrea on deck is Mickey Paulson? Go ahead, let's name an address, please.
Andrea Dingman, 4204 Uggstead Road. So I've heard all of you speaking, I appreciate the speaking because I don't speak so great. So what I've left this whole meeting with is more questions, and maybe I would like more answers. Some of those things are, what is the international ties to the funding of this data center? Who is the agency that is approving the center? Who is going to be held accountable for the purchases of the property? Who's going to be monitoring these agencies when the water is going out to this data center? Who is going to be held accountable when the contaminated water is going out? Have you reached out to the W.J. McCab chapter of the Isaac Wallerton League? Because they talk, protect our natural resources here in Duluth. Have you ever heard of the, have you ever seen the movie Aaron Brockovich? This, yep, pun intended. The city data center would, have you completed any studies that support what this net? I have my little kids here, but it would negatively impact my little kids growing up with the water and air pollution, the fine particles and the nitrous oxide that this gives off? Do you have a trust set up so when my kids get sick from some of this pollution, that they're going to be able to have and lead healthy lives, instead of getting cancer and to have to go through all these treatments because they can't breathe? Or any of the stuff that has the benefit of that? I also think there's additional health concerns. I pay for my health insurance every year. Are you going to give me additional health support? Because I need to be monitored, because you guys don't know the lasting effects of what this will be on us in 10 years, 20 years, even after this is being built? And is the company going to be providing extra support for the teachers that we lack to have in our elementary schools, in our middle school? Because of the extra people that are going to be coming through and being supported with the extra housing and all that stuff that's going to be? Because I'm leaving this with more questions than answers, and I hope that you guys take the time to actually say, hey, we don't have all these answers and we don't have all that research, and we need to have more answers. Especially as somebody as young as I am, I want more of that if I'm going to be staying here in Duluth. So that's my 32 seconds of, or three minutes of faith.
Thank you. Allison, and on deck is Anna Rodamacher.
Hello. Mayor Boucher, councilors and city staff. My name is Mickey Pearson, I live at 3231 East Forest Street in Duluth. I'm a business recruiter for Area Partnership of Economic Expansion, or APEX. APEX is a private sector-led economic development organization that represents communities in the seven counties in northeast Minnesota, including Hermantown. First, I want to thank all of you for your public service. I'm certain your lives have been consumed by text messages, social media, emails and everything else. Based on what we see here tonight and online, people are coming in hot. Thank you for your patience and your commitment to helping Hermantown grow and thrive. At the last council meeting, I spoke about how I believe our region is uniquely suited to welcome a data center into our community. Since then, your city staff have done an admirable job of offering plain language explanations about this proposed project through media interviews, the FAQ website, and even tonight in the presentation about the process. People have asked and are asking for more information to speak to their specific concerns around water, electric rates and transparency, and your staff are stepping up to provide that. So thank you. Data centers are catalysts for economic growth and diversification. Even this morning on Minnesota Public Radio, Gabe Chan, a board member for Minnesota Center for Environmental Advocacy, said that there is, quote, "incredible potential with the world's most wealthy companies bringing investments in our state, especially when developing our electrical grid to meet our state's climate goals." Beyond that, I want to speak to the risks of not continuing this process and deterring this investment. Across our state, when new development is proposed, we consistently hear opponents say, no, not here, that's not us. But when we say no today, we're pulling up the ladder behind us. And that's as true in Duluth's Congdon neighborhood as it is in Adolf. The older and smaller our populations get, and the less diverse our employment opportunities are, the quality of life we're currently enjoying will only get more expensive. Fewer job opportunities mean fewer young families, so your grandkids are more likely to wear a Centennial or a Mod-A-Medi jersey on the ice, since that's where moms and dads can find a job or house. Now, I'm a bit of a dork and I ultimately am grateful for all the people who are interested in on-the-ground local government action. And I urge everyone here to take a beat, look at the actual facts presented tonight, and in front of them, shovels are not in the ground tomorrow. This project is not being built in rural Arizona. We have robust environmental laws in Minnesota and a clear timeline here for public comment. This is the beginning of the process and not the end. We can build this better here than anywhere else in the country. We strongly encourage you to approve the ordinance to rezone and keep the public process for this potential project moving forward. Thank you for your time and service to your community.
Thank you. Amanda Rodamacher, is that right? And on deck is John Soshe. Name an address, please.
Hi, my name's Anna Rodamacher, I live at 1116 North Central Avenue in Duluth. Councilors, mayor and city staff, first, thank you all for your time, effort and public service and ensuring that this important public process takes place. My name is Anna Rodamacher, I live in Duluth, and I lead the operations and external relations for APEX, or Area Partnership for Economic Expansion. In addition to the great points raised the last few weeks regarding Minnesota's unique electrical grid, robust environmental protections and the extensive public process that is just beginning, I'd like to offer a perspective that hasn't been heard as often. I'm originally from a small town in southern Minnesota. After high school, I moved to Duluth to continue my education at UMD and graduated in May from the Labivit School of Business and Economics. During my last year at UMD, I had many conversations with my peers about life after graduation, job searches, career paths, and where they saw themselves next. You would be both shocked and saddened by how many of them weren't planning to stay in this region or haven't even considered it. The perceived opportunities for young professionals to remain in our region after college are limited and shrinking even further if we do not begin to say yes to new developments and growth. Despite having multiple higher education institutions nearby, we see so few graduates staying. Instead, they move to places where opportunity and momentum, and momentum are more visible. This proposed project presents a unique opportunity in disrupting this retention problem and helping our community thrive into the future. The presence of a Fortune 50 company in our region would offer far-reaching benefits, not only in terms of tax base, infrastructure and economic impact on surrounding businesses heard tonight, but also in how it positions our region on the map. It could attract students to our colleges looking to pursue careers in technology and innovation and offer a place for them to remain in the region after graduation. At completion, the project will offer 40 to 100 high-paying jobs in technology innovation in fields that simply do not exist here now. That's a step in the right direction for our futures workforce. I urge you to propose, approve the proposal to rezone and continue the public process for this potential project to aid in the prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. John Soshe, and on deck is Andrew Hawkins.
My name is John Soshe, I live at 4095 Reinkie Road in Hermantown. I went to a meeting of the Stop Hermantown Data Center for the first time last night. I went with an open mind, not sure if I should be for or against the data center, simply because the information about it was nearly nonexistent in the media. I found out that only recently was any of the information that the Alternative Urban Area Wide Review released to the pub, was released to the public. And even at that, it was missing some pertinent data, such as accurate water usage and the power required to operate a facility of this size. It's only tonight that we heard much of that information, and that's speculative at best. I heard some of you in the council say, this is the first that we've heard some of the details of this project. A request for that information was sent on May 23rd of 2025 by the Minnesota Center for Environmental Advocacy. And yet to this day, all of that information needed for us as a community to be able to make a decision as to whether or not to support this, has not been provided. The city of Hermantown had an obligation to fulfill that May 23rd request in an appropriate and prompt manner, according to Minnesota Statute 1303 subdivision 2. However, they have failed to do so, and for that reason, the city's failure to provide any description of the facility it is studying violates the letter and the spirit of the Minnesota Law on Environmental Review. For this reason alone, the AUAR is inadequate. Secondly, the very nature, idea that our St. Louis County and Hermantown officials would enter into non-disclosure agreements as far back as October of 2024 in regard to a contemplated business transaction, ostensibly the Hermantown Data Center project with Mortenson Development Incorporated, is at least very troubling to myself and many others here. Transparencing the operations of government matters and NDAs, at the very least, give the appearance of impropriety, especially when the information that citizens need to make informed decisions on issues like this appear to be a hyperscale data center is involved. The Minnesota Commissioner of Administration has made it clear that government entities may not limit access to public data by signing an NDA according to the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. And this is even more troubling for elected officials. Elected officials are required to conduct business openly. It is difficult to imagine how a city councillor or other city officials could engage in open conversations with the public that they serve while also signing contracts that purport to keep information secret from that same public. I would ask you to vote no regarding the zoning change being considered tonight.
We have three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrew Hawkins, and on deck is Nathan Barta. Okay. Okay, next then is Nathan, I believe, Barta. And after that is Richard Hilton.
Good evening, Mayor Boucher, council members. My name is Nathan Barta, I live on Rolling Road in Esco, Minnesota, and I'm on the Thompson Town Board of Supervisors. I'm not here to share my personal opinion, but I'm here to speak on behalf of the concerns that some of my constituents have, and some concerns that have been brought up to me by some of my fellow board members. I know that this is a difficult job, and I've been through meetings like this myself, so I want to thank you for your public service first. I've had several constituents reach out to me with some of the same concerns that have been brought up here consistently tonight. And I just want to make you aware that communities in the surrounding area are also concerned about the potential impacts that this project could have. I appreciate the opportunity for economic development and job growth in this area, and I know that that is a major potential success for our area, but I would also like to invite you into more open discussion if and when this project goes forward with the surrounding local governments, so that we can report back to our constituents, and they would have an understanding of the potential impact that it could have on them as well. Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Nathan. Richard Hilton, and after Richard Hilton is Sarah Lefal.
Just wait.
Name an address, please.
Just wait. All right, my name is Richard Hilton, I live on 5502 Hermantown Road. Vote no for the rezone, vote no for the permits. This is a blanket you, you know who you are when I'm saying these things. You've been working hard on this project since at least 2024. The public has known for less than a month, and that says everything. Rather than notify residents who could be affected, you chose to notify residents within 350 feet, the bare minimum legal. When it comes to your citizens, you do the minimum every single time. This seems to be the pattern. Meeting the letter of the law isn't the same as honoring its spirit. Doing the minimum may be legal, but it's not ethical, it's not transparent, and it's not leadership. You are working hard, bending over backwards, trying to push this through as quietly and as fast as you can. And for what? For who? If you wrote to approve this, I question your morals, I question your ethics, and I question your ability to govern. You've been scheming behind our backs for over a year, signing NDAs, changing zoning rules to make what isn't light industrial suddenly light industrial. How is that protecting your citizens? How is that fair? Would you do the same for a small local business here in Hermantown? Or does fairness only apply when a company has billions of dollars and lawyers behind it? This project isn't an industrial park, it's a wooded residential area. So why are you forcing an industrial building into a place that isn't industrial? Why not put it in the industrial places where these buildings belong? An industrial zone, not next to homes and forests. You keep saying this project will help property taxes, they won't go up as much probably. That's not a benefit, that's a talking point. You can't claim an economic benefit while raising every other bill we play, pay, from utilities to assessments to long-term maintenance on this system. What happens when this project requires new city sewer and water lines? Will residents be forced to hook up and pay for the privilege of a project they never asked for? Your actions have broken trust. You have held secret discussions, ignored citizen opposition, and voted unanimously for the weakest in our environmental review. 20-plus people spoke against the project in the AUAR at the last meeting, nine supported it. Most of those either didn't live here or stand a profit from it, yet you voted yes. That's not democracy, that's predetermined decision-making, that's not representation. That's betrayal. Public hearings aren't a box to check, they're supposed to guide your decisions, but your decisions were made long before any of us were informed. You swore an oath to serve Hermantown citizens, not corporations that hide behind NDAs. When elected officials put secrecy before transparency and profits before the people, it's not just wrong, it's un-American. So tonight, you get to choose what kind of leaders you are. You can stand for your citizens or stand for corporate interests. You can stand for your citizens or stand for corporate interests. You can rebuild trust or bury it deeper. But make no mistake, the people of Hermantown, the state, and possibly nationally are watching.
That's three minutes.
Just two more things. And if you won't represent us, you don't deserve to sit in those seats. Vote no to the rezone.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Lowfald. And on deck is Matthew Murphy.
My name is Sarah Lowfald. I live at fifty-five oh two Hermantown Road, and I'm here to implore you to not pass the zoning change. I have lived in Hermantown for the better part of forty years. I am fortunate enough to live on the same property that I grew up on, the same property that my father, uncles, aunts, cousins, and grandfather grew up on. The Lowfald family settled in Hermantown at the turn of the nineteenth century, before the nineteen eighteen Cloquet fire devastated the area and before Hermantown was even declared a city. To say I have deep roots in this land is an understatement. I love my home more than words can really describe. The rural heritage of Hermantown is what keeps people here and what attracts others to lay their own roots. As a resident, I have severe concerns with the urban development of rural forests, wetlands, and trout streams. The potential for destroying these vital and intertwined ecosystems could be catastrophic. A project of this caliber warrants a thorough environmental review that an AUAR simply does not cover. Using the more broad and general AUAR claiming it was for potential development that could include a data center was not the appropriate pathway for a known data center project of this size per the mandatory category for EAW and EIS according to the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board, Chapter four four one zero point four three zero zero and four four one zero point four four zero zero. I am led to wonder if this was a planned strategy so that Project Loon was confirmed, the more detailed EAW and EIS would not be triggered. As a child, I was taught that telling untruths and omitting details to hide information were the opposite sides of the same coin: lying. It has become increasingly obvious by the recent release of city council documents and emails that the details of Project Loon have been known for well over a year by at least some of the people here. Last year, I was in the same room with other residents of Hermantown and Old Midway Road to voice my concern over the ninety-six hundred-dollar road assessment that residents are facing paying in December. During this meeting, Mr. Boucher, you told us that if residents of Hermantown Road didn't want their road improved, we wouldn't have continued with the project. Well, here we are, sir. You are faced with the residents of the city you were elected to represent, and I ask you, if the residents of Hermantown show up to a city council meeting and voice their opposition to inviting a Fortune 50 company to build a one-point-eight-million-square-foot data center complex in the middle of rural area, will you stop the project? Will you stand by your own words and listen to your constituents? Once again, I implore you, no zoning change and no data center. Thank you.
Next is Matthew Murphy, and after Matthew is Kyle Bukovich.
Hello, my name is Matthew Murphy. I live at twenty-two ten Cottage Hill Circle, just across the border in Duluth. I've got a lot of concerns with this, but others have talked about things like noise pollution, environmental impact, and transparency. So I'm going to focus on industry economics because I think that's where I can best contribute to the discussion. So as background, I worked for IBM for twenty years. I ran servers that were located in a data center. So I understand that data centers are necessary, and I'm all in favor of tech jobs being brought to this region, and there being lots of good union construction jobs. But I have an issue specifically with a hyperscale data center for AI. So data centers don't lead to a lot of long-term, high-level tech jobs. The tech jobs that are here won't actually be the high-level ones, chances are. I only visited the servers that I ran in Chicago once, and it was like, oh, hey, look, there's my servers. And, you know, full disclosure, I would not want to live next to a hyperscale data center. So my issue is that AI is a massive bubble, and it's going to burst soon. This is not just my opinion. You'll see it in the Financial Times, in Forbes, in a lot of very serious financial and business publications. There's a lot of circular dealing going on. OpenAI are buying Nvidia GPUs, these the special-purpose processors that are used for artificial intelligence. And then, you know, in turn, Nvidia is investing in OpenAI, and so they get to have the same money go around the loop and pushes their stock price up. Nvidia is now pumped up to the point where it's worth more than every single big pharmaceutical company added together. That is not a good sign. At the same time, nobody is willing to pay for what the LLM-based AI actually costs to run. All of this is happening via venture capital investment. There are analysts estimating OpenAI needs to find four hundred billion dollars in the next twelve months. Sixty percent of the stock market gains this year are from four AI stocks. Look it up. So my concern here is that this would be another situation like some had already mentioned, the Foxconn plant in Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin, where there was a billion dollars of taxpayer money committed, and the building ended up being mostly empty. So can we be sure that the taxpayers won't have to sink money into a project and just have it fall apart when the AI bubble pops in a year or two and all the construction jobs also evaporate? Can we at least be careful not to count on the tax revenue before it's actually banked? And could we not do better with a diverse set of companies using the available space that's to be rezoned? I mean, yes, we need economic development in this area, but I just don't think that AI companies are good partners for that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Bukovich, and after Kyle is Dan Olson.
Kyle Bukovich. I live at two-two-eight-four East Foxborough Chaffey Road, Foxborough, Wisconsin. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Kyle Bukovich, president of the International Brotherhood Electrical Workers, Local Two Forty-two. We represent roughly six hundred union electricians, with the majority of our members residing in St. Louis County. Data centers are the backbone of the modern world. Every email sent, every video streamed, every online purchase, and every piece of information stored in the cloud depends on these facilities. As technology keeps advancing, so does the demand for more secure, efficient, and reliable data infrastructure. Simply put, data centers are the power plants of the digital age. They are absolutely essential to keeping our world connected, and our entire economy relies on data centers. When most people think of data centers, they think of big buildings filled with servers. But to the International Brotherhood Electrical Workers, we see something much more. We see good jobs, strong communities, and a future built by skilled hands. For IBW Two Forty-two, this is an incredible opportunity. Data centers require some of the most advanced and precise electrical work in the industry: massive power systems, redundancy, backup generation, and intricate controls. That's our specialty. It's work that demands skill, safety, and professionalism, the exact values that defined IBW Two Forty-two. These projects not only keep our members working, but also help train the next generation of electricians in cutting-edge technology that will define the future of our trade. But it's not just about us. It's about the local workforce. When a data center is built, it supports hundreds, sometimes thousands, of workers in the building trades. It gives young apprentices a chance to learn and gives second tradesmen and women steady, meaningful work right in their own backyard. And let's not forget about the community benefits. When these projects are built with local union labor, the money stays right here, supporting local businesses, restaurants, suppliers, and schools. Each paycheck earned on the job site is reinvested into the region, strengthening the local economy from the ground up. There's also an environmental aspect worth highlighting. Many people hear the word "data center" and think "energy-hungry" or "wasteful." But modern data centers are closed-loop cooling systems which recycle and reuse water rather than continuously drying from municipal supplies. This means minimal environmental impact, efficient resource use, and responsible design. It's technology that aligns with Minnesota's commitment to sustainability, proving that we grow our economy and protect our environment. At the end of the day, data centers aren't just about technology, they're about people. They're about keeping IBW members working, building the local community, and positioning Hermantown and the Northland as a hub of modern infrastructure. IBW Local Two Forty-two stands committed to powering the Northland for this next generation of growth with skill, safety, pride, and a commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Olson, and on deck is Nikki Norland. Name and address, please.
This is going to be tough. We got two guys from Wisconsin talking in a row. Dan Olson, six zero zero one Coming Avenue, Superior, Wisconsin. Mayor, councillor, city staff, I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for listening to all of us. I want to remind you that we're here tonight for an ordinance, and this is the second reading of the ordinance. And your task tonight is to either pass that or not, or table it, whatever you choose. We've had a lot of people here talking about their passion for where they live. It's no different than what I do over in Superior. I survived the refinery blown up. I've tried to get a power plant in Superior, and that stuff's all in my backyard, too. I live seven blocks from where I was born sixty-eight years ago. But tomorrow, I'll tell you that we have partnerships with organized labor. Tomorrow, I'll tell you we've got partnerships with Minnesota Power. Tomorrow, I'll tell you that we have relationships with Mortenson. I don't think it was a good idea to bring in Mortenson tonight. There was over two hundred people when these meetings started tonight, and you had a pre-agenda session, and you listened to their presentation, and you had another presentation, and I think you wasted some of these people's time. My point in all this, from what I want you to think about, is this is on the agenda. And the possibility of a data center coming here is no secret, right? It's all over the news. It's on... I don't use my cell phones to do any of this crap because I'm too old. But here's the deal. If there's going to be any chance of any economic development in Hermantown, you need to pass this ordinance to change the zoning, to allow you to do anything and everything. Sarah stayed in Hermantown this past week. They bought the Harley Davidson Building. So there's investors in your community that want to do this. If there's outside, everybody, you think in this room, let's not BS each other. Everybody knows who this Fortune 50 company is. I want you folks to think about what your task is here. Somebody brought up that you signed an oath or you read an oath, and I did that too. I was a city councillor in Superior for twelve years. Do what your due diligence is. Pay attention to what the ordinance is in front of you tonight. Tomorrow, you talk about a special use permit. The next day, you talk about the next. But I urge you to talk to the community as much as you talk to each other and make the decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Nikki Norland is next, and after that is Kathy Colmeyer.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Norland. I live at forty-four nineteen McCullough Street in Duluth. You are here today because you chose to run for public office. You are here to serve those who elected you to represent them, to be their voice at this table. We, the people, are here today asking you to simply listen, to have a thoughtful conversation, and to truly consider both sides of this situation. The secrets that have been held about this project, the true environmental and economic effects it will have, and the deceit that's been continued to be pursued is embarrassing. You should be ashamed. Deep down, you know that's not the way community service ought to be conducted. You are growing seeds of mistrust in the community at a viral rate, and trust is hard to gain back. However, you also have the ability to turn this around. If you came here tonight thinking you were going to vote yes, know that changing your mind or going against the majority is not a sign of weakness. Rather, it's a sign of wisdom, of consideration, and for respect. Voting no does not mean a no vote forever. What it means is that you're honoring your oath to serve the people and to listen to feedback, to gather the facts needed to show the whole picture. If you vote no, you can take the time that is needed for a thorough and open review to speak honestly with your constituents and get their feedback. A no vote doesn't have to be permanent, and it's an opportunity to invite a data center to the city will always be an option. On the other hand, a yes vote will unleash a series of changes that cannot be undone, a decision that will affect our futures and the futures of our children and our grandchildren. Think about that. A yes vote will cause permanent change for generations to come. Vote no today. Vote no for the secrets. Vote no to the deception. Vote no to gain back your dignity as a representative, and vote no to regain the trust of the community that you serve. Thank you.
All right. Kathy Colmeyer, and on deck is Jackie Dolins. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Colmeyer. I live at five-seven-five-seven St. Louis River Road, Hermantown. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak against the rezoning ordinance. The property to be rezoned is three hundred and fifty feet from my backyard. This will affect our quality of life, along with our neighbors and our community. We will be impacted by eight to ten years of construction noise and increased traffic. And this is just the impacts that we know about. I have many concerns. The one I'll talk about tonight is mostly environmental. The proposed data center property consists of fifty-five acres of wetlands, which absorbs rainfall and snow melt. It filters the water that eventually flows into the Rocky Run, a designated trout stream, and is inhabited by numerous mammals and insects. Also, according to the AUAR, with the building of a data center, there would be removal of two-point-three-million cubic yards of evacuation over a hundred and eighty-four acres. To emphasize, a hundred and four acres out of two hundred and twenty. Think of the erosion that might occur until the building is complete. Also of concern, the impervious surface is currently thirty-seven acres. After the build, it would be a hundred and forty-four acres of impervious surface. Stormwater ponds do not provide the same benefit as natural wetlands. We must protect rather than destroy our wetlands. The animals and insects do not need us, but rather, we need them. Without pollinators, our table would be empty. Please vote no.
Thank you. Jackie Dolins. Jackie, and on deck is Rebecca Grandorf.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jackie Dolins. I live at five-eight-four-two Old Highway Two. My husband and I live in my husband's childhood home, which is less than a half a mile from the properties mentioned in the rezoning ordinance. Please vote no on the rezone. This isn't easy for me. I don't like public speaking. I don't like being on camera. I don't like standing in front of you. Some of you know this. I have a few things I want to say, and please forgive my scattered thoughts. This process should have been full of transparency. It should have been see-through, bathed in sunlight everywhere, but it wasn't. The first thing you should have done is reached out to the community to get our input. I feel like this was kept a secret because you knew the community didn't want this. For a company to... For a company to ask you to sign NDAs under the guise of protecting or competition was dishonest. They knew what they were doing. They knew there would be pushback. They looked for a small town, hoping the council would do their bidding for a few jobs and some property tax dollars. All the while, they make hundreds of millions. Mr. Johnson mentioned in his comprehensive planning process descriptions tonight that there was one and a half to two years of meetings and chances for folks to make public comment, but not once was a data center mentioned in any of these meetings. It's disingenuous to say we had a chance for input. And now Hermantown is in the news for all of the wrong reasons. We're coming to you tonight to ask you to stop, to listen, to hear. As we comment tonight, we may have some of our information wrong, but we've only known about this for a few weeks, and we're playing catch-up. I am so disappointed in how this is handled. So now we are coming to you and telling you no. No data center, no rezone. Leave rural Hermantown rural. Leave the trees alone and give nature a break. We live there for that reason. This may bring property tax funds to the coffers of Hermantown, but some things just cannot be about money. You talk jobs, public infrastructure expansion, which is built for us, but then becomes our responsibility to maintain, income opportunities, et cetera. But if the community doesn't want it, then it does not matter. It doesn't matter that all the studies and due diligence has been done. It doesn't matter that a bunch of time and effort has been spent. It doesn't matter that you like the idea. What matters is that the community must ultimately decide. It is what the community wants that should drive this process and decision. We've filled the building past capacity. We walked in the rain to get here. We stood outside because we couldn't get in. We've sent hundreds and hundreds of emails and voicemails. Will you listen? Will you hear us as elected officials who represent us? This will have more far-reaching consequences than I think you or we are aware of. Data centers are a newer phenomenon. Don't say the regulatory commissions will protect us. Don't rely on the MPCA, MPUC, DNR, et cetera. You are responsible to protect us and our land, our way of life. Not only are you making a decision for the city of Hermantown, you're making decisions for the communities around you. You're making negative decisions for future generations. This shouldn't be based on money. In my opinion, trust has been shattered. NDAs may have been the norm, or may be the norm, but that doesn't mean they should be. Just because you have the right to do it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. This entire process has been tainted. I don't trust what... Couple seconds. I don't trust that property taxes will go down because it's all about money. That's what you've stated. You're going to bring a company in for their taxes, but then lower ours? I'm highly skeptical. Start the repair process by voting no to permanently stopping the rezone of these properties. Please, hear our voices, not the voices of those that don't live here. Let rural Hermantown stay rural and say no to the data center. Stop. Just stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, I believe it says Grandorf here. Next on deck is Mike Ralph. Name an address, please.
Rebecca Grandorf, 4198 Solway Road, Hermantown. I asked last time I was here what happened with the Adolf neighborhood plan and why the new comprehensive plan was changed to business light manufacturing. You guys answered that question on the website, saying nothing has changed. It's just how these assets are valued by our community, about, by the world, by developers. As someone who lives in rural Hermantown in a different part, I find that a little bit I think that you are here to represent the people in your community. You're not here to be representing companies. And I understand the draw of wanting development, but rural communities do matter. I'm a farmer. I moved to Hermantown in 2016, and I run a very successful farm that sells at the Duluth Farmers Market. You need to make sure that when you're doing your development plan, that you're actually bringing in public input. I actually didn't know that the comprehensive plan was being updated. I don't know what your guys' policy is for getting out, comment for people to get engaged in that process, but when I looked and read the comprehensive plan, it said that only 27 people responded to your survey. Are there like 10,000 people that live in Hermantown? Only 27 people responded to a survey? And you got 70, 67 people to pin on a map, things that were important to them. When you were giving disclosure about the meeting for tomorrow, you only gave people within 350 feet an opportunity to receive that letter. It seems like this body before us has a problem with disclosure, getting public input. You guys are doing the very bare minimum, and it is creating a culture of secrecy and things that are happening behind closed doors, which make it really difficult for us as your constituents to follow what's going on. I shouldn't have to read the minutes from your zoning commission, like, online, being like a secret agent. I shouldn't have to come to your meetings as my hobby to keep informed. You guys should have a better, a better way of getting us involved in your public process. I have serious concerns about the water line that's being planned down Midway Road. That does go by my neighborhood. It has been said by someone in this room that it will create good development opportunities on that road. That road and my entire neighborhood is rural. It's not supposed to be developed, so I would like to wonder, I'm wondering what that development would look like. Housing, it's like, I don't know what you guys are talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Ralph, and after Mike is Sadie Sorier.
My name is Mike Ralph, 5781 St. Louis River Road, Hermantown. Now, this group of people here are just sugarcoating a turd, and you're gobbling it up like children at Halloween. You guys sit there and say this is for the good of Hermantown. Well, you don't work for Hermantown. You work for the citizens of Hermantown. And the citizens say no, and I think you should, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Sadie, and after that is Dave Thornton. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Sadie Sorier, and I live at 925 East Fifth Street on the Duluth Hillside. I am very blessed to have a job that brings me into the rural Hermantown neighborhoods five days a week, 52 weeks a year. I've come to know these residents very well, and I've heard their fears and worries regarding the data center and the rezoning project in their rural neighborhood. I know their concerns have either been shot down by public officials or completely ignored. And out of concern, I helped start a petition against this proposed project. Here I have a list of over 1,600 names of people who do not want a massive industrial complex in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and do not believe that the economic opportunities will be enough to offset the environmental impact and added strain on our infrastructure. Going off script for a second, our representative from Kimley Horn mentioned 40, post-construction 40 full-time jobs at this data center, but they did not mention how many of them will be virtual, how many of them will be outsourced to people outside of Hermantown. And as a union member myself, I'm guessing these jobs are not going to be union jobs. And we haven't seen a plan to protect these 40 jobs from eventual automation, because automation steals a lot of people's jobs, and that is something that I'm very concerned about. How long will it take until these 40 jobs are 20 jobs? And how long will it take until the janitor is the only human being left in that building? I beg each of you to have some compassion for your neighbors and for your community. For the sake of your constituents, their families, friends, and their children, I urge you to vote no to the rezoning of the southwest portion of rural Hermantown. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Thornton, and on deck is Tom Bates.
My name's David Thornton. I live at 5861 Hermantown Road, going on 58 years. Come from Buffalo, New York. The original settlers from this area came from my neighborhood in Buffalo, New York, Grand Island, Tonawanda. Lived on the same street, Zimmerman. Their last name was Zimmerman. So I have a little bit of a tie. I don't know how it is, but that's it. I came here, I bought a piece of property in Hermantown, 20 acres. Found out that the railroad wanted to be rerouted. Was gonna ride through my backyard, almost. We stopped that. Few years later, St. Louis County said, well, we're gonna put a landfill in Hermantown, right in my backyard. We stopped that. Couple years after that, somebody wanted to open up a gravel pit not too far from his data center site. We stopped that. I hope I can stop this. I don't want my lifestyle in Hermantown to change. I'm sorry, I'm an old guy, but I just don't want it to change. I raised four boys in this area. One of them was John Thornton, who was on that advisory committee to adopt that comprehensive plan, and he worked very hard on it, very hard. From actually 2010, he was involved in planning, future planning for this community. He was not invited or not used as an advisor after April of 2024. Something went wrong, and he's upset about that. He was right, specifically working with the area of Adolf for the planning of that. They came up with a plan. He was never, it was never discussed that it got changed or anything. And he's really upset about that. So your full disclosure of having people involved in Hermantown to adopt that plan has some problems. This, my son was a leader in this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Tom Bates, and after Tom Bates is Jack Carlson.
Let's talk to you guys before. My name's Tom Bates. I live at 5369 Morris Thomas Road, the brown house up on the hill with the brown garage, next to the cemetery. I did some figuring. The Lake Superior catchment area, if you understand what I mean, the catchment area, takes in north of 39 trillion, trillion with a T, gallons of water every year in an average year, okay? Now, oh, come on, stop that. If we have a data center that, and this is pretty usual for these data centers across the country, to use 50,000 gallons a day, this might not, ours might not, okay? I know, ours might not, but it's real normal for them, too. That's, one, two, three, that's 18 billion gallons of water a day, a year, a year. Steady, guys. Okay. Here's the problem. Lake Superior, okay, follow me on this. I think you got the engineering mind of all of them. Lake Superior's only got 40 feet of fresh water, real good fresh water. It's got another seven feet that can be kind of a little bit sulfur dioxide, and the rest of it's full of sulfur dioxide. Thousands of feet of sulfur dioxide. If we put a high-pressure pump, high-volume pump, guess what we're gonna get? Sulfur water. It's gonna have to get cleaned up. And it's a, it's a real thing. It's a real thing. I just, I want you to think about this, because we can screw up our lake. We can. It's pretty easy to do. Over in Michigan, they're talking about the same problems. Everywhere that they pull water out of Great Lakes, they're talking about the same problems, because they've all got sulfur water down below. My grandson is a computer engineer. How much time I got left?
37 seconds.
37 seconds. He builds the little gizmos that go in this data center, okay? The servers. He builds them. He's the engineer that makes them. And he says there's only two people in the data center. A janitor? No, really. Once it's up and running, a janitor and a guy that finds the problem and calls for help from somebody who's off-site. And that's all that's gonna be in that data center. Everybody else will be off-site. So I want you to think about that. He knows, because this is his field, okay? He's not just talking through his hat. I might talk through my hat. In fact, I got a ball spot up there. Makes it easy. Thank you very much. My name's Tom Bates, and you can come over for coffee anytime.
Thanks, Tom.
But you should listen to your people.
Next is Jack Carlson, and on deck is Donald Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillor. My name is Jack Carlson, 8482 Swan Lake Road. I'm the President of the Duluth Building and Construction Trades Council. I represent over 3,000 union construction workers in this area. Not only this area, but within this city. I am here to support this resolution, to rezone the property to allow for this construction to happen. The jobs that these potential projects will create will put food on the tables of those families that work on those projects. They will put money into their retirement and their savings. It gives them an opportunity to live into this community. These are careers that many of our craft, local craft members rely on. Without projects like this, many of our members are gonna move away. We heard it earlier, they're gonna move to the cities. They're not gonna be members of this community. They're not gonna pay their taxes here. They're not gonna visit your local grocery stores, your local gas stations. They're not gonna be here. Local jobs are crucial to the community, as every dollar spent can circulate within this community up to seven times. This supports a thriving community. These projects will also provide up-and-coming workforce and good apprenticeships and good-paying jobs. As you heard earlier, these projects are gonna last for many, many years to come. And for many of those individuals that are gonna start their career, that means they can work here locally for a majority of it. They will most likely call this place home and not just down the road. So I ask that you please rely on the facts that were provided here today for you, and I urge you to pass this rezoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Smith, and after Donald on deck is Kelsey Mack. Name an address, please.
Good evening. I'm Donald Smith. I reside at 342 East Locust Street, Duluth, Minnesota. And I'm here to speak to you tonight as a neighbor, a business manager for IBW Local 242, and someone who believes in building opportunity right here in Hermantown. I'm here to respectfully ask for your approval for the rezoning for responsibly designed data center. That will create long-lasting jobs, strengthen our infrastructure, and bring measurable benefits to our entire community. Let's start with the economic impact. The project will generate hundreds of good-paying construction jobs during the build phase, jobs with benefits, safety, and dignity. But it doesn't stop there. Once operational data center will support permanent roles in technology, maintenance, security, and administration. Stable careers that help families put down roots here. It will also generate significant new tax revenue, supporting our schools, improving our roads, and funding the services that keep our community strong. This project will partner with union labor to ensure trained, highly skilled crews build it safely and efficiently. It will also invest in workforce development, creating training programs and apprenticeships that open doors for the next generational workers. We're not just talking jobs. We're talking about community investment, a project that's committed in sourcing materials and services locally, and establishing community benefits, including support for education... and establishing community benefits, including support for education, training and infrastructure that strengthens Hermantown and nearby neighborhoods. From a reliability standpoint, this project upgrades our regional connectivity, benefiting not just that data, data center, but local businesses, emergency services and residents. Energy systems will be abundant and resilient. And the facility itself will attract further investment and innovation to the area. They also take environmental responsi, responsibility seriously. The center will use cutting edge, energy efficient technologies, integrate renewable power and protect local wetlands and natural features through careful site planning. Finally, they're committed to accountability. Regular reporting and enforceable hiring and training targets will keep this project transparent and community centered. So tonight, I ask you to vote yes, not just for the rezoning for a data center, but for a future of opportunity, stability and pride in Hermantown. Let's build something together that our kids and grandkids will thank us for.
Thank you for your time, Tom. Thank you. Kelsey Mack and Kim Parmeter is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kelsey Mack. I live at thirty-six oh eight Midway Road. If you don't know the vicinity, I am, my front door is three hundred and fifty feet from the proposed site. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm both a proud Hermantown resident and a citizen of Adolf. I'm here to ask that you vote no on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. This rezoning proposal does not reflect that what the families of Adolf want or need. It doesn't align with the city's own two, excuse me, twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. A plan that promised to maintain our rural character, preserve natural beauty and open space and protect agricultural uses. Those weren't just planning goals, those were promises to the people who live here, people like me and my son. When we moved to Adolf in twenty twenty, the world felt like it was falling apart due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And like so many others, I was searching for stability, for safety. What we found in Adolf was more than a place to live. We found home. Our home is our sanctuary. It's where my son and I learned to breathe again after years of uncertainty. It's where I found peace sitting in my yard, hearing the wind in the trees and staring at the stars. It's where my son, who was only nine when we moved, learned what it feels like to run free in the yard and to feel safe. Those are the things that you can't replace with progress, zoning maps or promises of economic growth. We also found a community, real neighbors, like Tim and Kathy Resberg, who helped me when I needed, who pick up my friend, son from school when I work late. In, in Adolf, we look out for one another. We share what we have and we celebrate together. That's what's or, that is what ordinance twenty-five dash tw- twenty twenty-five dash seventeen puts at risk. This isn't just about land, it's about lives. It's about the people and memories that make a place worth protecting. When I attended the planning and zoning meeting on September sixteenth, I asked a simple question. What will Hermantown do to protect us? Protect us from noise and light pollution? Instead of answers, I was told to speak privately with Mr. Wickland. And moments later, the rezoning vote passed. Where was my chance or any resident's chance to say, to truly be heard, to say anything? Mr. Wickland answered to say that my opportunity to talk about this was back in twenty twenty-four. The comprehensive plan development. But no one ever contacted me. No letters, no calls, no invitation to participate. My son and I are the very people who will live with these decisions and we were never given the chance to be heard. To make matters worse, we learned that the twenty forty-five plan was modified after the steering committee adjourned without their review and then presented as final. And now that altered plan is being used to justify rezoning the land that we call home. As Mr. Ron Chetty himself said to WDIO, the city wouldn't be here if it weren't for an application. This isn't about what the citizens want, it's about convenience. So tonight I'm asking you, not only as politicians, but as neighbors, as parents, as people who understand what home really means. Please vote no on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. Protect our two hundred and twenty acres, protect the families who've built their lives here. Protect the peace and safety that Adolf provides to its people like me and my son. And most importantly, protect the integrity of this community's voice. Because once you take that away, you can't give it back. Thank you.
Next is Kim. For that is Charles Mills.
Good evening. Kim Parmeter, fifty-five ninety Stark Road, Midway Township. Mayor, councilors, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Kim Parmeter, President and CEO of the Hermantown Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here on behalf of our chamber members who believe in thoughtful, strategic growth for our city. Tonight's vote is not about approving a data center, it's about keeping the door open. Open to opportunity, open to investment, open to the kind of future that strengthens our community and its tax base. I was in Eau Claire, Wisconsin recently here. It's a community connected by our own Highway fifty-three. I grew up in that area, but haven't really spent a whole lot of time there since I've lived in the Northland for over thirty years. I was struck by how the North Crossing area has been so transformed. It's now a thriving corridor connecting communities along Highway fifty-three, filled with shops and restaurants, businesses and housing. So much housing. It's exciting to see the kind of housing stock that a growing community needs. And yet it's surrounded by the same natural beauty that's always been there. It reminded me of what smart, intentional development can do for a community. Hermantown has that same chance right now. A project that could bring millions in private investment, high paying jobs and a lasting infrastructure improvements on someone else's dime. And importantly, this area has been long identified as a space where Hermantown could grow its commercial tax base. This vote helps keep that door open. Whether it's called upon in the near future or years down the road. The city has proven that it can plan and prepare wisely. Let's look at our hockey arena, our trail system, Fickner Fields, the wellness center and the many private investments Hermantown has said yes to. This is the growing part of the Northland. And we need to embrace that. A yes vote tonight doesn't finalize any project. It simply allows Hermantown to remain competitive, to remain in the conversation, to lead with vision, to plan wisely and to grow intentionally. Let's be the community that welcomes progress, protects what makes us special and prepares us for the next generation. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion for personal privilege for.
Five minutes.
Sec, second.
Charles. That is Bill Olson.
Just let's get started with the right term. Let's get back to this.
Charles Mills, please. Is there a Charles Mills here? Charles Mills, anybody coming down the hall? Uh, Bill Olson, Bill Olson. And on deck is Peter Taylor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Councilors and City Staff. I'm here in support of the construction industry. And, uh, would like to acknowledge the people that are here tonight that are questioning the data center. Oh, Bill Olson, uh, four oh eight West Appear Street, Duluth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand why they're concerned and I know how they feel and, and how they feel about having this in their backyard. My family owned a one hundred and fifty year old print shop in Duluth. It was started in eighteen seventy. When the internet started cranking in the nineties, we were concerned. We saw this technology coming that was going to change our lives and replace print, and it did. And in the last fifteen years, fifty percent of all print shops in the country have shut their doors, including ours. Did the printers want this to happen? No. But there was a greater good. Billions of people were now able to send emails and get immediate responses, send PDFs instead of printing and mailing catalogs, letters and forms. No more envelopes and stamps. Everyone that wasn't in the printing industry won. The digital economy had begun. And that's what I see today is the greater good. Starting with construction jobs. You've heard all of this tonight, I'm just gonna repeat it. But the construction phase of this project will demand an immediate surge for local skilled labor and tradespeople, including electricians, pipe fitters, heavy equipment operators, HVAC, carpenters, cement layers, roofers and many more. There are high paying jobs for Hermantown and regional residents that will work for eight to ten years. Given the multi-phase nature of data centers, historically, there's an ongoing maintenance need for a project that, like this, that'll keep construction workers busy well into the future. The ripple effect is huge. Local businesses will boom, millions of dollars will be spent around our region. Construction needs massive amounts of materials, equipment, rentals, supportive services. The project will mean significant new revenue for local subcontractors, suppliers, hardware stores, distributors, gas stations, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. The tax base, there will be a substantial increase in the commercial tax base, but this revenue can provide stable funding for essential public services like schools, like police, like the fire, like city maintenance. Also potentially helping to keep residential taxes lower for all the citizens. There is potential to attract new businesses and also have new infrastructure like roads, utilities and public transport, et cetera. And finally, enabling the digital economy. This project is essential infrastructure for the modern digital economy and brings Hermantown and our region in the forefront of cutting edge technology. I believe this data center will benefit the city and its people into the future of our evolving technological landscape and it will benefit the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Taylor and on deck is Annette Ralph.
Hello, Peter Taylor, uh, forty-one ninety-eight Soulway Road, Hermantown, Minnesota. Uh, so thanks for the opportunity to, uh, comment and for listening. So, um, just thinking about the, uh, comprehensive plan change. Uh, would the comprehensive plan have been changed if Project Loon did not exist? If the hyperscale data center did not exist? Let's be like real and straightforward, it would not have been changed. There was a need for change and it was the data center. So relatedly, would this, you know, decision to be made on the rezone, would it be contemplated if Project Loon did not exist? This would not be happening if the data center did not exist, if Project Loon did not exist. So this rezone is a real decision to be made. One of the approvals for the data center. So we need to be straightforward and real about that. Okay, so what, um, what is important for the decision makers for city council to know to inform a decision for one of the important approvals for the data center? How should you be informed before you make that decision? And what I heard tonight is city council learned for the first time about important environmental information. Um, and as one example, uh, the noise, that was interesting information. Maybe you haven't had time to digest it and study it yet. Um, but I have more questions. What about, what is the area of audibility? That is very important because when you have constant noise, where you can hear it is very important for how it impacts you. And it can be significant adverse impacts to listen to constant industrial noise for decades to come. And we don't know what the area of audibility is yet. It would be nice to know what that is. So the, the other key problem with deciding this tonight, um, it, it related to all of that, that you just learned about thi- this environmental information. What about the Minnesota Environmental Policy Act and the environmental review? The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency told the city of Hermantown the following. The AUAR lacks an adequate level of detail to evaluate the actual and potential environmental impacts and resulting effects created by the development. It is at the environmental review phase where important details, such as site design, layout and scale are necessary to consider the projects in totality. So the reality is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency told, told you all, your environmental review is inadequate. And, um, it, it violates the Minnesota Environmental Policy Act. It hasn't been transparent enough. It was, didn't name a data center. People were in the dark. Need to restart the environmental review. You should do an environmental impact statement.
Minutes is up.
Table the, um, zoning decision until you do all that and you're adequately informed to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Ralph. Annette Ralph and on deck is Nick Smith.
My name is Annette Ralph. I live at five seven eight one St. Louis River Road. Um, I just wanna give you a perspective from where I live. The Minnesota um, power plant is right here. The power lines run right here, which take up half of my yard. My house is right here. The data center is going right at my back door. So I live in a quiet neighborhood currently. And now you can't guarantee me that won't change. And first I wanted to say, have any of you gone out and talked to any of the people that own those properties or anyone surrounding those properties to make a very important decision? Or did you make your decision by looking at a map? We grow vegetables. Can you guarantee me my water is not, my well water is not gonna be impacted? And then in turn, my vegetables, if I don't get enough rain? The water usage for us that have wells, it's not gonna be safe to drink. When they build those ponds and all their water goes into it and it supposedly gets filtered. This is right at my back door. The lighting. I used to be able to go out on my deck and look at the northern lights. Now I'm gonna have light. They say it's not gonna be impacted. They're not doing anything on the southern border. They talked about building a berm or trees. That's gonna take thirty years to reach the proper height to do anything. That's, they didn't do anything on the southern border where I live. The sales taxes. If you read all the articles from people who have data centers by their houses, these companies get tax breaks for thirty-five to fifty years. Do we get a tax break having to live with all of this? It's gonna be a lot of noise. There are generators, cooling equipment, lots of outside stuff, people living near them say it's like standing next to a loud air conditioner running twenty-four seven. What about the wildlife? You're gonna take out all that woods. There's not gonna be any deer, fox, bear, anything coming by my house anymore because of this. Now, if this was gonna happen to me, if this was happening to you, literally at your back door, would you wanna live where I live? Would you wanna trade places with me? You know, and all these people that say, yes, you know, they want this thing to go through.
I'm sorry, we're past three minutes.
They don't wanna live where I live either. They don't want to live where I live either.
Thank you. Nick Johnson.
Hi. My name is Nick Smith, 2973 Exeter Street, Duluth, Minnesota, 55806. Please vote no to the rezoning. I've only lived in Duluth for less than a year, but I grew up on the south shore of Lake Superior. I owe a lot to who I am as a person, to the lake and the woods surrounding, as well as the strong and passionate community of folks that live in the north woods. I moved to South Minneapolis five-ish years ago, and I quickly noticed Minnesotans have a strong allegiance to loons. I thought it strange at first, but I'm beginning to understand why. Loons serve as guardians and protectors of natural aquatic resources. They signify purity and balance in these ecosystems, reinforcing the respect for water among many cultures. This is why I find it ironic that you named the data center Project Loon in the AUAR Wetland Delugiation Report. This project does not stand for respecting aquatic and arboreal ecosystems. It's the complete opposite. This project is instead about instant gratification and generational destruction. We've seen the same destruction happen with every data center that's ever been built so far. What makes this one different? The loons do not speak for this project, so leave them out of this. Leave the trees out of this. Leave our public health out of this. Leave our taxes out of this. Leave our water out of this. What was the price to sell us all down the river without us knowing? Why the weird creepy secrecy of this entire project? Great progress never happens in secret. Loons do not keep secrets. Is this all worth it? Is this worth 40 jobs? How can you even consider a decision with a site analysis that doesn't have completed drawings? And when you asked if they had an air pollution metric, they said no. I design home remodels. If I come to a presentation with incomplete drawings, I might as well not even show up. How is this any different? You are the government. We expect better. Simple deliverables, transparent process. I ask again to please vote no to the rezoning, or at least table the decision for a more thorough environmental analysis. Also, 50,000 gallons, no, yes. 50,000 gallons a day of water for 40 to 100 employees who are flushing the toilet and washing their hands? Like, that's all it's used for? Like, what does that even mean? Like, the average person uses 8,200 gallons a day. How many times are y'all pooping? Like, that's too many times. That's too many flushes. Tell them to do their laundry at home. Like.
Nick, that's three minutes.
Doesn't make any sense. The earth and its people will remember your actions today. Thank you.
Brian Johnson. Singing now. Okay, Brian Johnson, and on deck is Amanda Mosiniak. Name an address, please.
Brian Johnson, 4060 St. Strom Road in Herman Town.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Boucher and council members. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned Herman Town resident about the proposed rezoning for 1.8 million square foot data center in the Adolph neighborhood. This project raises serious concerns about transparency, community planning, and potential costs for residents. City documentation shows that officials have been negotiating behind the scenes since May 2024, signing non-disclosure agreements and tailoring the comprehensive plan and zoning changes to facilitate this project, all without meaningful public input. Residents, including property owners like Tim Ressberg and Mike Ralph, have repeatedly asked for information and received vague or misleading answers. The community has consistently expressed a desire to preserve Adolph's rural character, as outlined in the 2001 Comprehensive Plan and the 2015 Adolph Small Area Plan. Beyond transparency, there's a financial concern. Large data centers consume enormous amounts of power, and utilities often recover the cost of infrastructure expansion through increased rates for all customers. Real-world examples show this pattern. In the PJM Interconnection Region on the east coast, large data centers contributed to 63% of electricity price increases in recent years. Northern Virginia, a hub for data centers, has seen wholesale electricity costs increase up by up to 267% over five years. You do have, you should have a copy of this with the references, brief references as well. Michigan and Georgia have documented cases where data center infrastructure projects could raise residential electricity bills by 5% to 10% or more. These impacts are not theoretical. They are documented outcomes where communities ultimately bear the cost. Transparency and accountability measures, number one. Make all negotiations and agreements related to this project public before any votes occur. Residents deserve to see the details, ask questions, and understand the long-term implications before decisions are made. Number two. Request that Minnesota Power and the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission conduct an independent analysis of how this data center could affect electricity rates for Herman Town residents, and share those findings publicly before any approvals are granted. It's also important to note that Minnesota Power's parent company, Elite Incorporated, is being acquired by Global Infrastructure Partners, a subsidiary of BlackRock, and the Canada Pension Plan Investment Board. A Minnesota administrative law judge recently warned that the prospective buyers are planning on significant rate increases and that the deal creates an unacceptable risk of rate increase and rate shock in a critical and economically vulnerable area of Minnesota. The city council should not approve any zoning changes, utility expansions, or project authorizations until these two measures are completed and the results are made public. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to protecting Herman Town residents.
Thank you. Amanda, and on deck is Kyle Bukovich.
Hi, chamber. My name is Amanda Mosiniak. I'm a constituent of Duluth, Minnesota, 55806. And I'm at 3221 Restormel Street. I oppose this data center. Briefly, my credentials to back up my comment are as an environmentalist in the nonprofit sector, working on outreach, advocacy, and fundraising dating back to 2003. Also, since that time, I've worked in politics, specifically the Democratic Party, because you cannot protect the environment without politics. As a side note, I am aware that city council is nonpartisan. However, NDAs and closed-door meetings do not support a functioning democracy, no matter which side you are on. It is also concerning when the experts speaking for this project contradict the information we have coming from the sites where these data centers already exist. I oppose this data center moving into Herman Town. This project will need a better environmental impact statement because this data center is an intensive industrial complex. The previous EIS is therefore not sufficient. The decision to allow this data center to be built will negatively affect your constituents in St. Louis County. This decision would cause long-term problems for short-term gains, and I do not see these gains going towards constituents, the people of this community. I can explain this simply. So-called natural gas is needed for these massive data centers. Actual data shows us that the power increase for these centers is rising year after year, and our power grids are scrambling to keep up. This is bad for the environment, and this is bad for consumers. We should be investing our tax dollars into green energy, not data centers. Investing in renewables is a viable solution to slow our climate catastrophe and invest in communities and the health and well-being of our earth and your constituents. Do not sell out our future to big tech. Do not sell out our future to big tech. Do not sell out our future to big tech. I urge you to do your job and be the leaders that you were elected to be. Please oppose the data center. Thank you.
Kyle Bukovich. And on deck is Bob Cormier. Kyle? Well, he must have been signed up twice. Okay. Bob Cormier. Bob here? His wife was here. Was that, Tim Ressberg is on deck. Name an address, please.
Bob Cormier, 5757 St. Louis River Road, Herman Town. Thank you, mayor and council members. My home is just 350 miles, 350 feet away from the southern end of the project footprint. This is our 50th year on our property, and I applied forest management on our land. On Saturday, I read through an online Herman Town project document and noticed that I, along with neighbors in Herman Town, Soulway, and Midway Township, who will be living in the shadows of this data center campus, are not even mentioned once in the entire document, which says to me, we are considered the acceptable victims of this project who will be denied the continued full enjoyment of our properties. Those in favor of this data center, please know that there are many of us living near the project that are being hurt. Is that okay with you? I hope not, because the impact of learning about the size and scope of this project has just blindsided us, and it will be difficult to recover, very difficult. Of course, I'm not in favor of the project, as it affects me very directly. If it is allowed to go through, it must be done right to prevent not one single loser. If the project is allowed to proceed, my wife and I cannot imagine what our future will be anymore. Burdened with trying to put up with construction noise for eight to 10 years, only to be rewarded for our efforts by being subjected to listening to a dishwasher for the remainder of our retirement. In short, we are at the mercy of noise for the rest, noise for the rest of our lives. I am for economic prosperity, but not of this hideous magnitude that negatively affects me and a whole swath of my neighbors all at once. Because this data center is not a BLM business in any way, shape, or form, I request you vote no for this BLM zoning change, or at least put it off. And let us think about this. We have many decisions to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Tim Ressberg, and on deck is Emma Rickman.
My name is Tim Ressberg. I live at 3634 Midway Road. Got my farm there. Most of yous know me, especially Joel. And this building site that you're going to put in a rural area that's going to affect a lot of people, this is no light business. The light business that's there is the Adolph store. This building site that they told about, all the thousands and thousands of square feet, a lot of people don't understand that because with that printout that I got from Joel on the complex here with all the different buildings and the offices there, they don't tell you how many feet long it's going to be, how many feet wide it's going to be, and how many feet tall it is. Martin said, and him said, it might be 40 feet, but I've heard other stories that it might be up to 80 feet. And then plus the homes that are going to be destroyed along this. It's not fair. And plus, the home values that are going to be around in the surrounding areas, like people have said, the values of our property are going to go down. After all them years of paying taxes and that on it and investing our money into it, we're going to end up with next to nothing. And it's just not that. It's also when they're building in the wetlands and that, and the Rocky Run Creek. What's going to happen when they start digging and destroying people's wells? And all of a sudden, they're going to be out of water. Where are they going to get their water from overnight? Nobody has thought about that. Databases can be built. But here in Herman Town, I'm pretty sure along Highway 53, there's a lot of zoning there, is that with all the other stores, manufacturing places there? Why doesn't the rezoning and that go over in that area? Where it's not going to disturb people's lives and listening to the pollution? I've worked on construction as electrician for local 242, and I believe in jobs and that. But depending where you're going to put this is one thing. If you'd put it where it belongs instead of in a rural area, that's why people come to move up into Herman Town. They'll live here and raise their families here. Put this where it belongs. This is not a light business. It's a heavy industrial. And it's unbelievable that they would change our neighborhood and our area there and our rural living there. And with all the pollution, it shows that they're going to have holding ponds and that. How deep are these holding ponds for? And are they going to be holding chemicals? And when we get a storm, when these holding ponds run over with all these chemicals in it.
Three minutes is up, sir.
Midway River and ruin the Rocky Run. And I vote that you just move it into the right area. And oh, by the way, being in the electrical trade, when one of yous, I don't remember which one says that a girl apprentice would be able to finish her career on building this. That's not true, because that's not the way it works. I know, I've been in it for 40 years.
Thank you. Emma, on deck is Rebecca Gilbertson.
Hi. Emma Rickman, 5215 Chris Drive, Herman Town. This is way outside of my comfort zone, so shout out to all the introverts in our community who have done something probably likely very hard for them, and I appreciate that I have all eyes on me right now, and I know it's late. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I'm going to read this as best I can. My name is Emma. I have been a resident of Herman Town for 10 years. My husband and I moved here from the Twin Cities with the intention of getting out of the hustle and bustle, planting roots in a community that values its natural resources and starting a family. We bought our dream home at 5215 Chris Drive and have slowly flipped it and made it our own, and we now have two amazing children, ages two and seven. Our home sits roughly two and a half miles from the land you are looking to rezon for this hyper data center. I am appalled at the gross misuse and abuse of the AUAR. This is intended for small data centers. However, what is being proposed is anything but that. A data center larger than the footprint of the Miller Hill Mall is not small or light industrial use. You have found loopholes in a fast-changing landscape fueled by power and big money to allow this project to move forward. The AUAR fails to calculate the totality a data center of this magnitude would have on our community, both near and far, and all of its inhabitants. According to the city of Herman Town's website, the annual water consumption for our city is 26 million gallons. The reported 50,000 gallons of water a day needed for the data center would amount to 18 million gallons annually. No one building, corporation, or business has any right to use this quantity of, use this quantity of a region's precious fresh water. The secrecy that has surrounded this data center erodes the sense of trust with your constituents. We are clearly not valued. However, property owners that were offered four times their property value certainly are. We are not a disposable resource, just like the land and water that will be gobbled up to power this monstrosity. This is a cancer. It will grow and grow and lace its negative impacts into the land, air, animal, animals, water, plants, and people. I fear you have doomed our community and those around us, your neighbors, your family, your friends, your children to this cancer. This type of construction will have domino effects that are not fully understood or even forecasted at this time. Two sentences. This data center threatens what makes Herman Town a beautiful place to live, work, and This data center threatens what makes Hermantown a beautiful place to live, work, and visit, and I implore you to vote no.
Thank you. Rebecca Gilbertson, and on deck is Christina Gallup.
Good evening. Given the hour, my name is Rebecca Gilbertson. I live at the corner of Highway 2 and Hermantown Road. I just thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I am going to be brief, and my brief comment is just simply this. I don't know if the council is aware that the Telecommunications Industry Association actually, so this is the data center, this is from the data centers themselves regulating themselves, and they have recommendations about the location of where data centers are to be placed. If you read through those recommendations, sirs, what you'll note is that data centers are not to be placed near rivers, floodplains, railroads, so not within a half a mile of a railroad, nor are they supposed to be placed on hills. And the question that I have for you this evening is whether or not the railroad has been contacted. I can tell you that they likely have not. I reached out today. I suggest you do so as well. The person who follows me also has questions about the location. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Christina Gallup, and on deck is Saul Helgason.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Christina Gallup. My address is 1114 Kirby Drive in Duluth. I am a professor of Earth and Environmental Science at UMD. I've been teaching Internet Environmental Science for 25 years. And every year, at the beginning of the semester, I ask the students, what are the top five issues facing humanity in terms of sustainability of humans on the planet? And more and more students are saying corporate greed. They're just getting really cynical about what's going on in the country and distrustful of what's happening around them and in government. And so I teach them about sustainability, and sustainability starts at the local level. And the decision before you tonight about zoning is particularly where the rubber meets the road for a data center like this, because where you protect the environment is where you put the facility, right? I really wonder a lot about when the decision was made to entertain this piece of land as a place to put this facility. With lots of forests, 56 wetlands, a trout stream, and the edge of a floodplain, a railroad, et cetera, right? It seems odd, right? On top of that, the law requires, so I have a colleague who teaches the people who do environmental reviews, so some of them may even work for the company who did the environmental review for the A U A R, right? Teaches the students how to do an environmental EAW and an EIS, right? Had a look at the A U A R that was done for this project and found that it was deficient, right, in what it was supposed to find by the Minnesota statute. So the information you have before you to make the decision tonight is insufficient to make your decision. I highly urge you to table this matter until you have sufficient information about the environmental impact, which is supposed to be not just the impact for this particular site, but also the larger impact is supposed to be considered, which was not done sufficiently. I have a few notes from my colleague in my pocket as well. But I would also like to just comment about the noise, because many of, I've heard many of the residents in this area mention the noise. There is a law about noise, right, with decibels.
We're at three minutes.
Thank you. Just can I finish my thought?
Yep.
Noise is not just decimal levels, but also frequency, right? So there's, you can have it be below the law level of decibels, but if it's at a frequency that's gonna drive you crazy, it may meet that legal limit, but drive your residents absolutely insane. So I think that also needs to be reviewed much better than it has been. So I urge you to consider this deeply as you think about your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Saul Helgason, and on deck is Rocky Russo.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. A lot of great...
Name it.
Oh, my bad. Saul Helgason, 4006 Five Corners Road in Hermantown. I live about two miles away. I'm here tonight not against progress, but against the illusion of it. Many people have discussed a lot of the big factors on energy, utility demands, transparency, but the thing I wonder, and I've kind of looked at a little bit more, is I have two boys, 10 and 13, they love being up here, the fishing, the hunting, the recreation, that's what we're known for. This could obviously change some of that and lead us into a different trajectory, which would be great. I'd hope they would stay up here, find different jobs, engineering, things that could be a little more technological, that'd be awesome. My worry is, and I'm wondering what kind of jobs, and that's been the discussion of what jobs will come, I don't know, I've looked around, I haven't seen many data, I don't think there's been enough to really see a substantial increase in some of the jobs that these bring in. One of the things I was kind of looking at, and just kind of figuring out, the jobs that they seem to bring in are not your blue collar jobs, those are right away, which is great, but it seems like most of the jobs that I'm seeing are more technological, hybrid, remote jobs. It'd be great, I think, for that big job discussion for you, if you guys could research and give us more information about what kind of jobs we'd actually see. There's been some discussions on 40 full-time employees. I've seen roughly around 20 is pretty common, 40 somewhere, we'll discuss and disagree to agree, but I mean, that's about the standard amount of people at McDonald's. So it's not a substantial amount of, to make me feel good that my boys will have something to come here to, and who else are coming for those jobs if they're that highly sought? My big hope is that Hermantown, this would strengthen our community, I'm not one against it, but I feel like a lot of what I've read, the data centers seem to not strengthen communities, they kind of drain them of their resources and pretend to uplift them. I would hope that we vote no or even pause. This is not anti-business, it's pro-accountability, leadership that protects citizens from the decision that can't be undone. Progress without transparency is in progress. It's damage with better marketing. That quote hit me kind of hard, it made sense. It's damage with better marketing. So I'm asking you, please pause, think about it, protect Hermantown, and make sure that it's built here that reflects our values and not someone else's bottom line. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rocky Russo, and on deck is Nicole Kearney. Name an address, please.
Rocky Modine Russo. I live at 4884 Midway Road. I grew up in Hermantown and then moved over into Pike Lake. I wanted to bring up some information that I haven't heard in regards to, except just recently, about the environmental impact. This is a cloud-era data center. I work AI. I do, there's no jobs. I don't go to a data center. We work remotely around the world. The data center might bring jobs in the beginning, but not long-term. One of the things that I do is with the AI is I'm asked to protect myself from the frequencies, EMFs, electromagnetic frequencies, that can shoot out from data centers miles and miles. And I protect myself from what I do with AI. There are no long-term studies on cloud-era data centers. There are on military data centers, which is a totally different story, not cloud-centered data centers, which somebody was saying that AI might be gone soon, could be true. We could have jobs and build something else. How about we build parks or we build homes? I suggest, well, if anybody does vote yes for this data center, one, these guys aren't gonna be here to back you. This is your family, this is your community, these are the people that you see every day. BlackRock is not gonna be here to back you, MPNL is not gonna be here to back you, these guys, Microsoft, Google, Facebook, they're not gonna be here to back you. All these people here are. They elected you, they're here, they see you every day. If you vote yes, just switch your house with somebody that lives close to it, and then you live there.
Thank you. Nicole Kearney, and on deck is Amelia Soriano.
My name is Nicole Kearney.
Address, please.
7740 Birch Road, that's in Canyon. Just up the highway and through the woods from Hermantown. Well, I'm sorry, I'm way down here. I'm here tonight because I'm asking you, councilors, the, I think that rezoning 400 acres for a hyperscale data center is a forever decision. These facilities can demand city-scale water and massive electricity with fleets of diesel backup generators that add pollution and noise even just during routine testing. Minnesota's own resources warn that big data centers can use 1 to 5 million gallons of water per day and strain local supplies if poorly sighted. We're talking about the Lake Superior watershed, our drinking water, and our identity. We've also seen non-disclosure agreements signed around this project, and that obviously breaks public trust. Tonight, I'm asking you to either deny or at least table the rezoning until there's a full environmental review and more transparent answers on water, energy, emissions, and community impacts and input. Public land use demands public facts, not secrecy. We're asking you to protect our neighborhoods and our families by at least giving it more time and more consideration. There's a lot of information to take in, and if you guys are just learning of, you know, some of it, then there's no possible way that, you know, I think that you have enough in front of you to make an informed decision. That rezoning would basically be like a green light on all of the stuff that was already in the planning and works for a couple of years now. I realize that it's not uncommon for non-disclosure agreements, you know, to be used early on in talks with developers for, you know, good reasons, but it's also a tool and tactic used that actually prevents, you know, coordination with other stakeholder groups or anything like that, that basically prevents us from getting the information that needed to help cities and businesses put everything they need to, into making these educated decisions, because the information isn't reaching the proper audiences during the decision-making process. So it's like kind of all planned out, and then it's like, oh, this is just the final, we just need this, you know, stamp of approval right here, and then we're in there, and then it's all done. It isn't the land that belongs to us, it is we who belong to the land, and that's what I'm asking you to remember, and just at least give it more time to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia Soriano, and on deck is Sharon Norris. Amelia? Okay. Better? Okay. Sharon Norris, and Dan Norris is after that. Sharon Norris? Anyone down the hall? And Dan Norris is on deck, if Dan is here. Okay, no one here. Dan Norris? Any Dan Norris here? Jim Cluckert? Cluckert?
Mine too. My name is Jim Cluckert. My partner and I are blessed to live at 206 North 11th Avenue West, Duluth, Minnesota 55806. I would be remiss if I didn't immediately thank the women and men of Hermantown Police and Fire that are here to, should we get too passionate or too enthusiastic, they're here to de-escalate the situation, and I'm sure it's not been a great fun night for them, but they are safeguarding our democracy. You've heard a lot of passionate people here. I keep hearing folks whose voice break when they talk about why they're here. They're here to defend their homes. Some guy who's been living on the same property for 50 years, now he's gonna play a change-up game. Some young woman who talks about how she's living on the land that she grew up on, that her parents grew up on, that her grandparents grew up on. I get passionate. I get passionate. I'm passionate about democracy. I'm a working man, but I've been involved as a social activist, and I do have political beliefs, but I know at heart I am an American. And I know that despite the fact that I'm a Bernie guy, I've had great conversations with some of the MAGA fans, great conversations, and that, and we have more that unites us than divides us. One common point that I share with my right-wing sisters and brothers is that I know our government has forgotten us, and when anybody here, sitting up here, signed an NDA, you signed away your right to be an elected representative, because you no longer... You no longer represent those who elected you. Now, you can try and comfort me by telling me that it's a Fortune 50 company, and we should be just delighted to hitch our wagon to that star. What did Fortune 50 give us? I'll tell you, sometimes they gave us Love Canal, sometimes they gave us Black Lung Disease, sometimes they gave us the Exxon Valdez. Pacific Gas and Electric turned the town of Paradise, California into a living hell, a fiery hell. So I'm not content with unregulated capitalism. I am quite fond of entrepreneurs, of people who are ready to get up and go and do something fun and make a little money out of it besides... fun and make a little money out of besides.
We're at three minutes.
That, that's a regulated, uh, capitalism. And if you folks can't even say the name of the company that's driving this project, I tell you, I don't think you're going to be able to regulate them. They're already regulating you.
Next is Patrick Mally. And after Patrick is Lisa Marlowe. Thanks, Pat.
Good evening, Mayor Boucher, counselors. Thank you.
Name and address.
For, oh, Patrick Mally, forty-six ninety-one Vox Road in Hermantown. Um, I am here speaking, uh, on the benefit of a data center for our community. And I know that's very much against what a lot of people here tonight are talking about. I do believe that there are a lot of unanswered questions. And I will agree with that. I believe that you should table this going forward. Um, but I believe that a data center is a really good idea. And I believe that the infrastructure that it would bring to this community in the form of communications specifically, that's the world I, I work in and I live in, is communications. The communications that we've been hollering about that suck in Hermantown could very much be helped by this data center and the infrastructure that would be required to bring this data center online. So I, I say that to say that there are other things that come along with this data center in terms of infrastructure that we need to think about. And, uh, while I will say that I believe that the, the council should take a minute to step back and hear your constituents. I do believe that you're, that you're headed down the right path with a development like this. Um, but I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Marlowe. And on deck is Paul Pazinski. Lisa Marlowe? Somebody's checking down the hall? Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Pazinski. I live at fifty-three eighty-one Morris Thomas Road. Uh, I signed up late. I wasn't going to speak tonight, uh, until I heard the presentation. Um, and it made me say, you know what? I gotta say something. So, uh, some of this stuff's been touched on, but I'm going to kind of try to highlight it. Um, one is, it, it irked me that somebody come up and said, you know, we had this comprehensive plan to, for this light manufacturing. And that's why we're going to zone this two hundred and twenty acres because of our comprehensive plan. But, and I felt kind of guilty, like, well, this is, this, you know, I shouldn't feel bad. They've been thinking about this for a long time. Yeah, well, that was deceptive. The, the truth, and the other guy said it, the truth is, the comprehensive plan included two hundred and twenty acres of light manufacturing because of the data center. So the zoning decision is being made because of the data center, not because of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was driven by the data center. Don't deceive us. Um, and then we have experts coming and talk about all the good things about this data center. Then we hear no bad things. Like, everything is good. Think of all the money. Think of all the tax dollars. How many tax dollars? We don't know. How many employees? Well, we think forty. Are they going to be onsite or they're going to be working remotely in the cities or somewhere? Well, we don't know. So there's good things, but we really don't have the answer. And there's no bad things because we didn't talk about it. Because the only people we had come here have a vested interest in getting this data center in here. We've got Minnesota Power. Minnesota, the more power Minnesota Power sells, the more power Minnesota ma, more money Minnesota Power makes. Um, the people that have talked in favor of it, most of them not, don't live in Hermantown, and I'll have a vested interest. They can, they're going to make more money. So we're dealing with, and then we don't talk about any of the downside. Uh, what have, Economics one-on-one, demand goes up for power, the price goes up. Demand goes up for water, the price goes up. Whoever did the stats on the water, if we average four hundred thousand gallons a, a day, and this is going to take fifty thousand gallons a day, that's twelve and a half percent increase, not two to five. Maximum seven fifty a day, and now we're still over five. Deceptive, again. What are the downsides? So electricity goes up for all the, water goes up for everybody. Uh, we don't know what it's going to do for our property taxes.
We're at three minutes.
You're dealing with a whale here, and we're little fishes. And they've sold you on this. They've got all the power in the world. They've got all the money in the world. We don't. You do, we can't just take their word for it. So in order, if we don't have all the answers right now, you, I don't think you can vote to zone this, like, green light this project so it can go to the special use permit and the next step and the next step. You have to get all the information. And you can't go by what the whale tells you.
Thank you. Miranda McKay Chambers. And on deck is Olivia Beaker. Name and address, please.
Miranda McKay Chambers, fifty-seven forty-four Jane Bard Road. All right, I'm just going to be clear. I am against the proposed data center. This community doesn't need it. However, I'm going to give you all the benefit of the doubt that you knew as much as we did. I'm, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt that the changes made to the plans and people not being informed was human error. I don't believe that any of you are inherently bad people. I, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt that you're not. At this point, I urge you to table the rezone until we can gather more information about what a commercial site would actually do in this spot for Hermantown. Whether that be this data center or a different company down the line. If the company that wants to build this data center is interested in the site, then they will still be interested in the site in a year. If they are interested in this site, then they should be willing to wait until an actual environmental review can be done of this site. If we don't approve a rezone today, that doesn't mean that in the future it can't be revisited. That's, that's an option. I would like to see more information about how this would affect our taxes for the residents, how it would affect the people in the area, and also the people who live along the water and sewer line that would be put in if they would be forced to connect to this line and pay the amount that it's going to take for them to connect. Now, my eleven-year-old asked to speak tonight, but I sent her home because it's way past everybody's bedtime. I wasn't going to let her speak, but I told her I would speak for her. I haven't talked to my kids about this as it seems out of their scope, but she's scared. She's scared that the power is going to go out all the time and she won't have a nightlight on during the night when it's dark. She's scared that she can't enjoy nature anymore or go outside. Her little sisters are scared that they won't be able to have mom bring them fishing anymore. These are valid fears from our youngest people who will feel these effects through their entire lives. Additionally, I will say this. If you appro, approve this rezone today, then anyone, I'm speaking to the audience, who is for this project and you don't live here, you should really make an offer at current property value rates to purchase the homes of anyone who lives near this project so they can have it in their backyard if they want it so bad. I bet they won't.
Olivia Beaker? Olivia Beecher Beaker? Okay. Then we are done with anyone who's on the list. Is there anyone else who is not on the list that would like to speak that wants to come up and start with their name and address? Name and address, please.
I think one-seventh foot road, right?
Name?
John Grillo. Um, my friend's mom, who raised me as well, um, was just swindled out of three acres of her property by Minnesota Power. They told her that they, she could either take the money or she wasn't going to get anything for it. I believe that is associated with this, with this project. They just put in new high lines, um, between Morris Thomas and Hermantown Road. And, uh, she couldn't be here tonight. She's watching three kids. She's raised ten kids. And her husband just passed away in twenty twenty-one at fifty-one years old. She's doing it all by herself. And, um, it's just really upsetting. Land that is purchased, that is not for sale, is still theft. And I believe that. So you know what I mean? And, uh, it's just really upsetting. I just hope that you guys are going to do the right thing. And the thing about progress is that it's subjective. Progress for somebody isn't progress for somebody else. So, um, I know you, Wayne, I know you like Fierros. I know, uh, I went to school in between you and your little brother. Just please don't screw us here. That's all I, that's all I got.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Yoka. I live at thirty-eight sixty-seven Uggstad Road. Um, I don't know if you guys all know this, but our school is looking for a new school and it's been brought up that this data center could potentially give money towards our new school. They had a meeting on September sixteenth at the middle school. How many people went? Can anyone tell me? How many people actually went? Twenty. Me, and I know that gentleman there was there because I looked to see. You guys are all saying money for this school. They're asking eighty-four million dollars. That's a lot of money. They said if your property tax is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, it's going to go up by five hundred and thirty dollars a year. That's a lot of money. We are still paying for the high school, middle school referendum for another ten years. This is for twenty-five years. We are being taxed out of our place. I understand this is supposed to bring money. It said in the paper, Hermantown Star, it's supposed to generate, you know, eight to ten times, or ten to fifteen times more money. It says it's eighty thousand dollars a year. That's eight hundred thousand dollars. I was just talking with the chief, uh, for the fire department out there. Two million dollars for a fire truck. Mr. Von Chetty, you were saying, could we get a new fire truck? If we're looking at that eight hundred thousand dollar mark, that's two and a half years slated. I mean, eighty-four million dollars. That's a lot of money. It's, it's a lot of money that people don't have. If our electric bill is going up, if our water bill is going up, Lord knows, food's going up, how are we supposed to stay living here? We moved here for this small-town feel. We don't need all these developments. Okay? You say we're going to bring jobs in here. Where are those people supposed to bring their kids to? People are going to have to be teaching students in a trailer in the back by the woods in the middle of January. You think the CMO of Ascenda Health wants his kids back there? I don't think so. You think the head of the cardiology department wants her son back there? I don't think so. Okay? I don't want my children back there in a trailer. If you don't believe me, you can go see the PowerPoint. They recorded it. You will hear me questioning it because I'm a black sheep of everything. I ask a lot of questions too. Okay? So where's this money all going towards that this tax revenue? Are we building Uptown? Is this paying for Uptown and for our soccer field to be moved? Who's paying for that? I asked you at National Night Out and you gave me a awkward pause. Hopefully, area businesses. What are those businesses? Is it the data center? I don't know. Is it a restaurant? I don't know. You know, it's just transparency talk. We are key stakeholders in this, not just you guys, the community. Okay? And I don't want this data center to ruin our vote for a new school or even to renovate it. Okay? Like, th, this is the future of our students here. This is why people come here. They don't come for a data center. I'm sorry. They're coming because of the school. Okay? You know, I, I don't know what else to say. It's the future of our students, our Hermantown Hawks. I know someone said, do they want to play hockey up here down in Mata Hari? They want to come up here. Come on, it's where the north. Everyone wants to come and play here. All right? It's disgusting. It's bad behavior and I'm, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of seeing all this. We are adults. Please talk, communicate. I work in healthcare. If we didn't talk, you know how many people would be dead? A lot. Okay? So talk with us, your key stakeholders, please. That's all we're asking. We're not saying, you know, that we don't want to talk. Just communicate. It's not that hard. Closed-loop communication. There's a lot of clinical data on it. I, you know, everyone has done a communication class at some point in their life. Just please don't have this data center ruin everything for the school because I feel like it's tainting it. I'm on the parent teacher organization and trying to get a playground. This eighty-four million dollars does not include playground equipment. It makes me mad. It does. Or I showed them, can they have a playground? And I talked with you and you and you about how much it costs for Fittner Field because that, that playground is amazing. You guys hit it out of the park with that. And you guys talked with me and told me to come here. You told me to come to a city council meeting. Why couldn't you talk to me like a human being and say, hey, this is what we're thinking for the community? This could help the schools. But instead I find out on Facebook about this.
Sarah, three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Some, someone else would like to speak? Step up to the podium and start with your name and address?
Yeah, hi. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm Lily Hall. Uh, I live on four-five-one-six Pitt Street, Duluth. Uh, I had signed up on a sheet, but I think the sheet got lost. Um, but, so thanks for checking if anyone had last-minute things to add. Um, I'm asking the council to vote no to rezone because, um, from what I've learned in the short amount of time since a lot of this information has been available is that the city did not disclose the true nature of the project, which prevented the public from being able to meaningfully comment in the majority of this process. Also, the Environmental Quality Board in Minnesota repeatedly commented that the alternative urban area-wide review or AUAR would not be sufficient if the proposed project was a data center, which it is now known and was known by officials at the time that it was. As elected officials serving your constituents, please take seriously the wishes displayed by this huge turnout tonight that you have not effectively communicated why your zoning and moving forward with this project is in the community's best interest. What convinced you that we are missing? What are the tangible facts, not vague promises, that convinced you? Please do your duty to ensure that short-term economic gains for the few do not outweigh long-term concerns of the many. Infrastructure is a necessity of society. That's true. However, if everyone lived like a US citizen, we would need five Earths to support the current human population. There's an online calculator you can take and it's impossible if you say you live in the US to live a sustainable life just because the infrastructure that we have in the US is unsustainable. This is our chance to influence that we get sustainable infrastructure, not just following a trend where the money is. Other comments tonight of passing this rezoning, rezoning as an innocent act of keeping the door open for development are inaccurate. If this had been an open process allowing multiple projects to be involved instead of just keeping, uh, it secret with the proposed data center, then maybe that would be the case. But how would any other project have a chance of catching up with over a year of planning that this proposed data center has had? Passing this rezoning is the equivalent of passing the data center. We shouldn't be kidding ourselves. We can hold developers accountable if public, if the public is told information about projects and not just told that, well, things will be modeled. There will be future information about the money, the negative impacts, the benefits. But if we cannot have that data, then we cannot meaningfully comment. We need to be forcing the developers to design ways to have these data centers sustainably developed. Otherwise, we don't deserve them at all. But just allowing a data center to get a contract in and build it however they want without having meaningful competition is not going to ever improve us in a more sustainable way. Just meeting regulations also or complying with laws does not mean that there won't be negative impacts. I'm a wildlife biologist and seeing all of the impacts of projects that are lawful but still have significant negative impacts is staggering. So just because this project is legal doesn't mean it isn't negative.
We're at three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to say that this public pushback is just a sign that, at the bare minimum, enough information, information has not been provided to us. So I please urge you to vote no to rezone until you have convinced us why you would like to move forward with this. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else with public comment this evening? Any other public comment under ordinance 2025-17? We'll move to the city council to see if any councilors have questions or comments.
Nothing at this time.
Anyone?
Oh. Yeah, I just. I think it should be said that we are not approving a data center tonight. We are rezoning property. In, in overviewing the area, driving around, I think it's important to note, there's a railroad track loop, a transmission station, a landscaping company, two gas stations, a liquor store, Rachel Contractors, two union halls, NII, FedEx Express Terminal, recycling services, account firm, accounting firm, excuse me. There's an auto body service and repair shop, a used car lot and HVAC company in Frido, LA. We are not approving a data center.
You're out of order, sir.
Property. That's, that's what I had to say. That's, that's what I had to say.
Is everyone ready to allow us to speak?
If you're honest.
Okay, we can, we can resume the meeting tomorrow.
I've said my piece.
I have a couple of things that I want to point out. First of all, no one on the council has signed an NDA. And there is no planned assessment for anybody on water or sewer line. One person did bring up something that piqued my interest. And that is exit plan for data center closing in case it ever closed. I would like to see some type of plan going forward for this type of thing because I, I remember what's happened with mines and them opening and closing. And I think that's something that we can work on through the process. And like Councilor Blah said, we're only approving a zoning change tonight. We're not voting on the data center, although it affects the data center. Does any other councillor have anything to add or comment? Roll call, please.
Councillor Peterson?
Aye.
Councillor Jelly?
Aye.
Councillor Blah?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Motion to recess?